Okay, we're live on YouTube.
Sarah, you want me to call the roll?
Yep, so welcome to the November 9th public hearing and public meeting. We will, uh, of the Landmarks Preservation Commission will begin by calling the roll.
Chair Carroll.
Here.
Vice Chair Bland.
Here.
Commissioner Shamir Baron.
Here.
Commissioner Chapin.
Here.
Commissioner Chen.
Yeah.
Commissioner Devonshire.
Here.
Commissioner Goldblum.
Here.
Commissioner Gustafson.
Here.
Commissioner Jefferson.
Yeah.
Commissioner Lutti. Commissioner Holford Smith.
Here.
Right, thank you, and welcome everyone to our, um, public hearing and public meeting for today, November 9th, 2021. We're gonna start the day with a public meeting item for, uh, proposed designation. And then we will move to our public hearing agenda for applications for work on designated properties. And this meeting is being held via Zoom and livestreamed on our YouTube channel. If you would like to watch the proceedings, you may do so by going to our YouTube channel. And if you would like to participate in any of the hearing items, you may join the Zoom meeting at the estimated time which is shown on our agenda on our website. And, um, instructions on how to join will be displayed at the testimony portion of each item. And so with that, I will turn it over to Caitlin Moss-McHale, our Director of Research, to take us through the proposed designation item.
Great, thank you, Sarah, and good morning, everyone. Item number one on the research agenda this morning is LP 2654, 200 Madison Avenue, first floor lobby interior, 200 Madison Avenue, AKA 200 to 214 Madison Avenue, 11 to 19 East 35th Street, 10 to 20 East 36th Street, Manhattan Block 865 Lot 14. Item proposed for designation is the ornate T-shaped first floor lobby of 200 Madison Avenue, designed in the neo-renaissance style by Warren and Wetmore in 1925 to 26, consisting of a through-block arcade and perpendicular elevator hall, East 35th and East 36th Street entrance foyers, and the fixtures and interior components of these spaces, which may include but are not limited to the historic wall surfaces, ceiling surfaces, floor surfaces, lighting fixtures, attached furnishings, vestibule and elevator doors, decorative metalwork and attached decorative elements. Designed by Warren and Wetmore in 1925 to 26, 200 Madison Avenue contains one of the most ornate office building lobbies in Manhattan. The first floor interior features a through-block arcade with intricately detailed vaulted ceilings, gilded reliefs, terrazzo floors, polished marble walls, ornamental metalwork and mosaics. At the public hearing on September 28th, representatives of the owner and the New York Landmarks Conservancy testified in support of designation. No one spoke in opposition. The commission also received letters in support of designation from Senator Brad Hoileman and the Murray Hill Neighborhood Association. Located in the Murray Hill section of midtown Manhattan, 200 Madison Avenue extends a full block between East 35th and East 36th Streets. The proposed first floor lobby interior landmark, shown on the right, indicated in red, is a T-shaped space that incorporates a through-block arcade, perpendicular elevator hall and two entrance foyers. 200 Madison Avenue was commissioned by Jesse H. Jones and the Houston Properties Company. Construction began in 1925 and was completed in 1926. Due to zoning requirements, it was built as a mixed-use structure with separate lobbies and entrances for residential and commercial tenants. You seem to have lost a photo here, I'm sorry about that. The historic first floor lobby has a vaulted arcade that connects East 35th Street and East 36th Street. To negotiate a sloping site, the arcade incorporates steps, ramps and landings. The lobby of 200 Madison Avenue is among Warren and Wetmore's finest and best-preserved interiors. Active from 1900 to 1930, this prolific firm were consistently inventive interpreters of the classical tradition, producing a significant group of New York City landmarks and interior landmarks, including the lobbies of Steinway Hall, the Madison Belmont Building and the New York Central Building. The arcade and entrance foyers have highly polished marble walls, patterned terrazzo floors and gilded plaster ceilings inspired by Renaissance Baroque and 18th century sources. The ceilings and upper walls incorporate dense fields of low plaster relief set against dark green and Pompeian red grounds. At mid-block is Elevator Hall, which extends from the arcade towards Madison Avenue. Like the arcade, it features a terrazzo floor, marble walls and an elaborate vaulted ceiling. The plaster ceilings incorporate various kinds of naturalistic imagery, including rosettes, leaves and vines. In the south part of the arcade, as well as in the elevator hall, are stylized images of peacocks, a common symbol of pride or prosperity. At the south, oh, sorry. At the south end of the arcade is a large saucer dome that rests on pendentives decorated with fanciful images of griffins and dragons. You can see those here. Um, and in the arcade, each arched bay incorporates a band of floral mosaics, an animal medallion and a pair of projecting lion heads. Near the elevator hall on the east wall are twin brass tenant directories. There are also gleaming brass elevator and service doors, as well as two ornate nailboxes. The concentration of well-preserved detail dazzles with the intensity of the approaching Art Deco style, which the lobby anticipates without adopting modern forms or materials. The proposed interior landmarks incorporates the highly intact historic T-shaped lobby and its vestibules at 36th Street and 35th Street, as you can see here. And so that includes both sets of vestibule doors. And this lobby originally served the office building. As originally built, 200 Madison Avenue had two lobbies. As depicted in the slide, on the left, the Madison Avenue lobby served the apartment hotel and the East 35th and East 36th Street entrances and arcades served the office building. When the hotel closed in the late 1930s, the lobbies were joined and the Madison Avenue entrance and lobby were subsequently modified due to alterations which changed both the finishes and footprint of the Madison Avenue lobby. The proposed landmark site incorporates the original boundary of the office building lobby. The first floor lobby of 200 Madison Avenue is among Warren and Wetmore's least-known but most impressive interiors. Aside from respectful alterations to the reception area, lighting and other minor modifications, this magnificent public lobby looks much as it did in the 1920s, when 200 Madison Avenue first opened. Research staff and, in particular, Matt Postal, who's been working on this and whose presentation I'm sharing with you today, recommends the commission vote to designate this lobby as an interior landmark. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Kate, and thank you, Matt, for all of your work on this impressive lobby space and this proposed designation. Commissioners, do we have any first questions? You know, we've seen this presentation a few times throughout the process. Okay, so, well, you know, I'd like to just sort of kick off by saying I'm so delighted that we are at this point in the process today. The lobby is really a magnificent and highly intact interior arcade. And in both quality and integrity, it's on par with our other designated lobbies, including other designated lobbies designed by Warren and Wetmore, like the Madison Belmont Building nearby and Steinway Hall. And, you know, I want to thank the building owner and managers for being such good stewards and caring for this lobby as if it were already designated. It's so well-preserved. And, um, also thank them for recognizing the importance of lobby spaces in a commercial building and how they can really elevate the spirit of employees who are entering for the day. So, and I think this is a feeling that is needed more than ever now that businesses are starting to welcome back employees. So I'm, you know, I'm delighted that this is here. It's, it's just a magnificent space. And I don't know if anyone else has comments or would like to add anything. Yes, Commissioner Bland, please go ahead.
Thank you. Just a, um, a little-known fact for this born and bred Houstonian. I had no idea that Jesse Jones, whose legacy is huge in Houston, would have extended to a skyscraper in New York City. This is, uh, just a little arcane fact for me to know and appreciate. But my, my question or comment is, I hope this lobby is accessible to the public, as the public may seek to, um, see it and enjoy it, as you've just suggested, unlike what has become, unfortunately, uh, in the Cathedral of Commerce, uh, the Woolworth Building, where the public is not allowed even to open a door to look in, uh, without being scolded. Can you, can you answer that question? Is it allowable for the public to, to see this lobby?
Kate, go ahead.
Yeah, um, as you can see here, the arcade does, um, link both, um, doors from the side streets. There is a security point that you can see in this image, and that takes you into where the elevators are, but the public can, can come in, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Others? Okay, well, I would recommend that we move to, um, vote on a designation today. Commissioner Devonshire, would you be comfortable making this motion?
Absolutely, thank you, Sarah, and, and thanks to the Research Department for another excellent job.
Thank you. I'll be happy to.
I move that the Landmarks Preservation Commission designate the 200 Madison Avenue first floor lobby interior consisting of the through-block arcade and perpendicular elevator hall, East 35th and East 36th Street entrance foyers, and the fixtures and interior components of these spaces, which may include but are not limited to the historic wall surfaces, ceiling surfaces, floor surfaces, lighting fixtures, attached furnishings, foyer and elevator doors, decorative metalwork and attached decorative elements. 200 Madison Avenue, also known as 200 to 214 Madison Avenue, 11 through 19, East 35th Street, 10 through 20, East 36th Street, Borough of Manhattan, as a New York City interior landmark because of its special character and special historic and aesthetic interest and value as a part of the development, heritage and cultural characteristics of the city, state and nation, as set forth in the designation report for LP 2654 dated November 9, 2021. I also move that the Borough of Manhattan tax mat Block 865 Lot 14 be designated as its landmark site.
Thank you. Commissioner Bland, would you second that motion?
I second.
Thank you. Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll.
Aye.
Commissioner Bland.
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron.
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin.
Aye.
Commissioner Chen. Mr. Chen. See there?
He, he just said aye.
Commissioner Devonshire.
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum.
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson.
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lutti, I don't believe has joined us. Uh, Commissioner Holford Smith.
Aye.
With 10 in favor and none opposed, the motion passes.
All right, that's great. That's our newest interior landmark. I'd like to thank everyone who participated in this process and again, thank the owners and managers for their support throughout the process. All right, we'll now move to our Preservation Department agenda.
Okay, thanks, Sarah, and good morning, everyone. We'll pause for just a brief moment to make sure we get the applicant team into the virtual hearing room, and then I'll begin. Okay, all right, so for today's Preservation Department public hearing agenda, we'll start with item number one. This is LPC 22-03378, application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Brooklyn, Block 251 Lot 25, 36 Remsen Street in the Brooklyn Heights Historic District. This is an eclectic-style rowhouse built circa 1861 to 1879, and the application is to construct a stair bulkhead, install railings, HVAC equipment and modify masonry openings.
Uh, applicants have joined the hearing. Um, you just need to click on the screen to advance. And state your name for the record, and you may begin.
Thank you. I'm, I'm Damian Zanino from Studio DB Architecture, and I'm the architect for 36 Remsen Street. Do you want to introduce yourself now?
Sure. Hi, Cass Stackleberg Higgins, Quays Barth and Partners, working with Damian and our respective offices on this project. Thanks.
So I'll give you a brief introduction to the site. So 36 Remsen Street is, is located, um, in the Brooklyn Heights Historic District. It was built circa 1846. The bulk of the work that we're proposing is restoration and preservation, uh, work. Uh, it was built with a sister house, um, just to the west at 34 Remsen Street. And, um, for some of the preservation work, we're using that as a guide. As you can see, like, there's the shroud, um, above the entry door that we'll be restoring. Um, but a bulk of the house is being converted back to a single-family residence. Um, it's a through lot, or it's a separate lot, but it goes all the way through to Grace Court. So a lot of the work we're proposing is, is visible solely from Grace Court. None of the proposed work, other than the restoration and preservation work, is visible from Remsen Street.
Great, thanks, Damian. The, uh, the photo on the left, obviously, is the street beside, uh, on Remsen Street. Uh, and then the photo on the right is the back of the house from the rear of the open lot. The lot itself is 90 feet deep and extends all the way back to a historic fence fronting onto Grace Court. Um, you can see the back of the house has a two-story bay window extending off the parlor and second floor. And then that tall chimney-like structure is a, a later addition, um, of a dumbwaiter shaft that was added after the extension was built off the back of the house. Next slide. Uh, two tax photos on the left, the photo of 36, on the right, 34, the building on the right margin, the right photo of 32 is actually part of the original row as well, but 34 and 36, um, sort of evolved in a similar fashion, built in the 1840s. They both gained a one-story mansard, uh, in the 1880s, uh, and there were modifications at the rear of the building as well, uh, through the 19th century. Next slide. Uh, a series of maps, the Paris map from 1855 on the left. The original houses were just single volumes, uh, with no extensions. And, uh, by the 1887 sandboard map, you can see both 36, um, and 34 had gained rear yard extensions. Uh, I'll also point out that there's a, a narrow side yard, and maybe Damian, you can point this out with your mouse. The side yard that separates 36, uh, from 34, it's only seven or eight feet, uh, wide between the two extensions. And then right where the cursor is right now in the 1904 map, you can see this little bump out for the construction of the dumbwaiter shaft that was added slightly later. So the building has sort of evolved over time, but you can also see the depth of the lot, that 90-foot lot extending all the way down to Grace Court, and the back portion of these lots have, have never been built on. And then the map on the right is a, a current text map, um, just indicating the, uh, the lots and the, uh, the shape of the footprint of the adjacent buildings. Next slide. The image on the left is an aerial view, just to indicate the, the, the building in its context and show the extensions off the back end of its neighbors at, at 34 and 32. But, uh, you can also begin to see, um, other rooftop elements on this row, particularly on Remsen Street, west of Hicks, Hick Street, that include some occupiable space and bulkheads, things like that, some that are visible, over the primary facades on Remsen Street, uh, and then many of which are visible from, from Grace Court. The photo on the right illustrates just the back of the house from the, the rear of the lot with one's back up against that fence fronting onto Grace Court, uh, where you can see the extension and the dumbwaiter shaft, and just at the very top of that, where the red arrow is, just the, the upper section of the, uh, of the original rear extension, our rear facade of the building. Next slide. And then views from across, uh, Grace Court, again, with a fence in the foreground, that fence will be restored as part of, as part of this, uh, as part of this project. The view on the left, obviously, is a wintertime view. The one on the right, uh, is, is more recent. There is sort of seasonal, uh, visibility and through the trees currently of, uh, stair bulkhead that we're proposing. You can see on the building, uh, just to the left of the arrow and the right photo, uh, sorry, on the left photo, the, an existing bulkhead that is visible off the back of 34 Remsen Street. And the, the work that we're proposing today is, is of similar visibility, uh, on the roof of 36, along with some modifications primarily to masonry openings at the back of the house, swapping windows and inserting doors and, and moving some of the window openings on the side elevation in that side yard, uh, as well. Next slide.
This little sliver right here is the side yard that we'll be discussing later.
Thank you. Some detailed photos of the, uh, features off the extension. Particularly, the wood features are not in great condition and all be restored as part of the project. New metal-clad wood windows will be installed, and one of the great benefits of the project as well is actually getting rid of all the through-wall air conditioning units that includes some that are on the front facade through the, uh, brownstone stucco, as well as through some of the decorative elements on the rear of the building. Um, so those elements will be, uh, removed and the, and the wood elements will be restored. And the photo on the lower right is a basement window which is visible from Grace Court, and the proposal is to slightly enlarge that and drop it to allow for access into the rear yard from, from that lower level. Next slide. Some other detailed photos along this side yard condition, a bay window extending off of the, the parlor level, uh, in that side yard. A series of windows, one-over-one windows and these, these metal supports, these steel supports that support the, uh, overhang of the, of the second floor. Next slide. Uh, views now back, uh, to the, to the rear elevation of the original building. The photo on the left and middle just show the sort of misalignments that, that occurred in some of these windows and the through-wall air conditioning units, uh, that are apparent. The, the photo on the left, the top window in that photo, you can see that's at the parlor level. Uh, there's a infill brick panel, so we, we have a sense that this window actually was significantly taller, maybe sort of a, a French door, uh, and then, uh, a through-wall unit, uh, directly below a nonhistoric, uh, concrete sill. And then the photo on the far right showing the back of the house painted in the through-wall units. Very simple, no corbeling across that upper, uh, that upper section of the, of the, of the elevation, uh, and all the masonry and, and windows will be, uh, repaired and restored as part of the project. Next slide. Photos on the roof, the, the roof of 36 is populated by vents, skylights, features of that nature, a hatch for a ladder access to the, to the roof, and then the photo on the right, looking south across the roof, uh, you can see in the, in the, in the background, the, the bulkhead that exists on the roof of 34 Remsen. Next door. Next slide. And just finally, a, a few images before you see the proposed work of, of photographs from around the historic district, sort of nearby the project site, just indicating that there is, uh, visibility of other rooftop features, railings, uh, bulkheads, small-scale additions. It's pretty typical of the historic district that's populated by small-scale, low-scale buildings and, and open yards that allow for, uh, visibility of these kinds of rooftop features, similar to what we're proposing as part of this project. Damian?
I'm sorry. So here we have, uh, the existing elevation on the left. Uh, as Cass mentioned, you have the through-wall air conditioners, both on the, uh, on the brownstone and within the slate of the mansard roof. Um, there's a metal shroud that's been placed over, um, over the detailing, um, above the entry door. An additional through, through-wall window, uh, through-wall air conditioning units that we're all proposing to remove and patch and repair. On the image on the right is the proposed elevation. The, uh, metal cresting at the roof will be restored. All of the slate, um, you know, will be patch and repaired at the, where the, where the air conditioners are, air conditioners are being removed, as will the brownstone where the units are being removed. Um, as you can see on the roof, there is, this is the proposed bulkhead with skylight and a railing beyond. None of this is visible from the Remsen Street side. So everything, uh, on this side, on the Remsen Street side is entirely restoration and preservation. That's visible. From the Grace Court side, the rear elevation, um, this is the existing on the left. Uh, you can see the through-wall air conditioners, the misalignment of the windows that cast reference with the infill brick below this, um, this window in the parlor level. The proposed elevation, as Cass mentioned, we're proposing to widen the, um, this opening to create, uh, easier access to the rear yard from the basement level. Similarly, uh, to changing this window, using the existing lental and creating a doorway there to access the rear yard, and then, um, expanding this, again, working with, under the existing lental and either restoring this or returning this to a doorway, creating a doorway in this opening, a French door. The railing that's proposed here is not visible from, uh, is setback, so it's not visible even from Grace Court. And then on the roof level, um, there's proposed, the proposed bulkhead for easier access to the roof. And then in removing all of the through-wall air conditioning units, we need to, uh, locate the condensers on the roof. And so we're proposing to locate them next to the bulkhead and provide a screening for those that is, uh, visible, that is slightly visible from, uh, from Grace Court. So just some window details that I'll go through quickly. Uh, this is the, um, this is that window opening, the rear yard access at the basement level. So working, uh, just expanding that opening to the width of the side of the, of the, um, dumbwaiter shaft and a little bit also to the, to the use as well. And just creating, creating a doorway within that opening. This is at the parlor level, that's, this is that misaligned window with the infill brick below that we're proposing to convert into a doorway. This is the side yard elevations. On the left is the existing, on the right is the proposed. As Cass mentioned, this alley is just a little bit more than seven feet wide, so this is really a view that you never, you can never get this far away to have this view. It's really a, a real sliver between the two buildings. Um, and most of the proposed work is, is on this elevation. What we're proposing on the parlor level is to, um, within the, working underneath the existing lentils to increase the height of these openings, to create doorways in these two locations, and then at the second floor, to, um, to widen the, to change the location of the existing window openings, um, to create more space between them. They'll be the same width and proportions of the existing windows, for which, uh, we're proposing to change the locations of them. We're also proposing to extend the bay window down, um, to the ground level to convert this door to, uh, to a window of the same proportion of the existing windows. There's also this, uh, crazy armature that when the, uh, addition was built to the neighboring building, this was how the flue was extended, we're proposing to remove the armature and create, to jog the flues to create a less visible and, less visible, uh, support system. Some details of the proposed doors at the parlor level. Uh, seeing, one of the existing windows that we're proposing to widen is infill, has been infilled, so we're proposing to, create those windows and widen them. This is the basement level plan. On your left, you have existing. On the right, you have proposed. You can see the width of the existing opening and then the proposed width of the new doors, uh, to sort of align with the bay window above. And then the conversion of this doorway to a window and the conversion of this window to a doorway. And the extension of the bay window down to Grace. On the parlor level, um, the conversion of these, uh, existing windows to doors and, um, the conversion of this window to a doorway as well. On the roof level, um, as Cass mentioned, the existing, uh, roof is, is populated with a lot of, uh, venting and skylights. We're proposing to consolidate that, uh, and create easier roof access. It's currently a ladder with a hatch. We're proposing a stair bulkhead, um, sloping away from Remsen Street, um, coming up kind of in the middle of the house. Uh, and then creating a screening for the air conditioning unit here, uh, with some access to the roof here. All the skylights will be flush with the, the decking and be walkable. So, uh, this is the existing, um, elevation. So this is the existing elevation, I mean, section showing sightlines. Let's see, with the with the very long unbilled Grace Court lot, you have a, you have a long extended visibility. So we've done our best to minimize the visibility from Grace Court. And we've, everything that we're proposing is not, none of it is visible from Remsen Street in any, in any way. So the first element is the railing at the roof, which is setback, so that it is not visible from Remsen Street. Similarly, the railing that we're proposing on the roof of the extension is not visible from Grace Court. It's setback, so that it's not visible. What we do have that is visible is the bulkhead, a portion of the bulkhead and a portion of the screening for the air conditioning. So here are just some views from Remsen Street. This is with the mockup in place and just showing that none of the proposed elements are visible in any way. Then this is, this are views from Grace Court, showing the mockup in place on the left. And on the right, it is sort of a proposed rendering of both the screening with the bulkhead visible, slightly darker shade behind. You can see that the the proposed visibility is very similar to the existing bulkhead on thirty four Remsen Street. But because of the long, the long distance from Grace Court, we're sort of, it's impossible to minimize, to not have this bulkhead visible. Again, just additional views of the mockup in place and then the rendering on the right showing the visibility of the of the bulkhead and the screening. This is looking through the gate, through the fence, sorry. Again, sort of views from across Grace Court with the screening in the foreground and a little bit of the bulkhead in the background around there. And again, sort of just the visibility, very similar to bulkhead at thirty four Remsen Street. And the appendix, just some of the preservation work. We talked about sort of the removal of the shroud and the restoration of that detail. And all the removal of all the through wall air conditioning and the restoration, and the restoration of all of the brownstone and the deteriorating wood detailing. This is the armature that I was mentioning and the flue structure that we'll be removing and the restoration of the copper skylight above the dumbwaiter shaft. And this is the fence in the, in the, on the Grace Court side, which we will be restoring. This is some views of the of the mockup when in place. So you have the, the bulkhead itself with its doorway and then the screening for the mechanical, the condensers on the roof.
Okay, all right, I think this is very clear. Thank you. And we may want to go back to the appendix if we have specific questions, but I think you've laid out a very clear presentation. Commissioners, do we have any questions? All right, I don't see any questions at this time, so we'll move to public testimony. And if you're in the meeting and would like to speak on this item, please raise your virtual hand so we can identify you. And I'll turn it over to our executive director, Lisa Cris Savage, to take us through the testimony.
Okay, great, thank you. And we had one person sign up, Judy Stanton. And Judy, I'll bring you in now. Let's see, Judy, I tried to promote you to panelist. You just need to hit accept. There we go. And now you just need to unmute yourself.
Okay, got it. Judy Stanton for the Brooklyn Heights Association. We support this application generally. We appreciate the historical documentation that was presented. We have no issues with the bulkhead or the rooftop equipment screen. We do have two suggestions on other visible elements. For the new bifold door that will be replacing a nonhistoric window under the bay window on the rear extension, we suggest more attention be paid to matching the door to the window above. Unlike the other rear facade elements, the bay window and the new door are actually quite visible across the rear yard when viewed from Grace Court. We suggest that two pane doors instead of a single solid bottom in the drawings we saw, while the new door is certainly an improvement over the existing window, it still calls out its contrast to the bay window, which seems unfair. For the tall metal flue, we will be happy to see the bulky metal support disappear. If existing conditions end up requiring a new support instead of the proposed point points, we suggest that the applicant take care to design the least obtrusive support possible. Thank you.
You're muted, Lisa.
Sorry about that. Thank you for the testimony, and I don't see it of any other hands raised.
Okay, great. And we did receive a resolution from Brooklyn Community Board to recommending approval of the application. So I'd like to turn back to the team and and ask if you'd like to respond to the comments we heard, particularly the two suggestions.
Um, we, we appreciate the feedback. Thank you, Judy. And we're, we're interested in, I think, the the recommendation for how to address the bay, the doors on the rear yard for the bay window is noted and something we definitely would be interested in pursuing. And certainly with the armature support for the flue, we are definitely on board with finding the least visible and way of supporting that. So if we can attach to the Jason Building for permissions, we're definitely going to create a a structure that is as minimally visible as possible. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, do we have any final questions? Okay, I'm going to start to request to unmute all of yous so that we can close the hearing and begin our discussion. Okay, and Commissioner Gustafson, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
No moved.
Thank you. Commissioner Chen, would you second that motion? Commissioner Chen? Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the hearing is closed and we'll begin our discussion. And, you know, we appreciate the materials you showed us about the restoration work. The restoration work happening at the front facade and at the railing at the back will be reviewed at staff level. But it's nice to understand the whole context of the proposed work. So commissioners, before us today, we have the rooftop bulkhead and HVAC and screen, which are somewhat visible from Grace Court alley and, or Grace Court. And then we have changes to the window opening at the basement level, under the bay window and on the side facade facing that sort of eight gap, eight foot side yard, which one can see obliquely from Grace Court. So we'll begin our discussion. Commissioner Bland, would you like to start this one in your neighborhood?
Sure, in my neighborhood, I know the building and particularly the rear gardens, which are notable in all ways. And although some of them might be developable, I think Brooklyn Heights would a great loss if any of them were developed over time. So this is a very elegant solution, I think, to an important, one of the large houses on Remsen. I think, I don't take exception to to any of it. I think the two suggestions that Judy on behalf, behalf of the BHA made were good ones. It seems as if the applicant is interested in pursuing them. So altogether, I think this is appropriate. I'll just point out again, the, 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 these changes are part of changes that have been made over time to the rear of all of these houses that one can see from Grace Court, looking back over these incredible gardens, which are some distance away because of the length of that garden. But all of these houses have had changes made to them over time. And I think this is just another set of them, albeit a nicer set because they're under the auspices now of the of the Landmarks Commission. Many of these changes were made earlier. So altogether, a wonderful project, I think.
Commissioner Jefferson?
I think this is a well thought through project. And I had some qualms about some of the changes, but on a whole, I think it's, it's, it's well thought through and I can approve it.
Okay, Commissioner Gustafson?
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Bland, appropriate.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Yes, I think it's appropriate and well done.
Okay, Commissioner Holford Smith?
I agree, it's very appropriate.
Okay, Commissioner Chapin?
Yeah, I think the rooftop additions, the fenestration are typical and appropriate and the visibility is acceptable.
Okay, Commissioner Goldblum?
Three hundred percent.
Commissioner Devonshire?
Obrigado.
Okay. And Commissioner Chen? Commissioner Chen?
Yeah, I think my headphone is having problems. So, no, I agree with all the comments.
Okay, great, thank you. And if we could just, maybe if we could go to the rear elevation quickly, just to look at that ground floor door. So, I mean, they've divided it in three equal parts, which sort of have a proportion that relates to the width of the windows above. BHA was suggesting two parts. Do people feel that that it needs to be restudied or that it's appropriate as is? I know Commissioner Bland felt that they could continue to restudy it.
It's appropriate.
Okay.
Appropriate.
All right, great. Okay, so we'll go ahead and and make, I'll go ahead and make that motion in the matter of docket number twenty two zero three three seven eight thirty six Remsen Street in the Brooklyn Heights Historic District, an eclectic style rowhouse built circa eighteen sixty one to eighteen seventy nine. This is an application to construct a stair bulkhead, install railings, install HVAC equipment and modify masonry openings. And I note that the building's style, scale, materials and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Brooklyn Heights Historic District. I recommend approval, finding that the proposed work will not damage or eliminate any significant architectural features, that the installations at the roof will be setback from the front and rear facades will not be visible from Remsen Street and will only be visible from select vantage points from Grace Court through open lots on the opposite side of the block, that the simple massing sloped roof and gray standing seam metal cladding of the bulkhead will be typical of utilitarian rooftop accretions found at buildings of this type and age in this historic district, that the neutral gray and black finishes of the HVAC unit, screen and railings will help these installations remain a discreet presence, that the modified openings at the parlor floor of the rear facade and at the side facade of the addition will only be visible at oblique angles from a limited portion of Grace Court and will only remove a limited amount of plain brickwork, that the multi-light configuration and obscured glazing at the modified parlor floor openings will be limited to the parlor floor, which often featured larger openings with different infill configurations than other floors at buildings of this type and age, that the shifting of the masonry openings at the side facade of the addition and the modified opening beneath the bay at the rear facade of the addition will maintain a typical solid to void ratio in keeping with the character of secondary facades at buildings of this type, style and age, and that the proposed work will not detract from the special architectural and historic character of the building or the historic district. And and I'll just note for the record that the applicant has agreed to continue to work with the staff to find the least obtrusive armature for the new flue that is being extended, that is being relocated or shifted in direction. And should they choose to restudy those doors, they can also work with the staff on that. Okay, and Commissioner Jefferson, would you second that motion?
I second the motion.
Thank you. Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Holford Smith?
Aye.
With ten in favor and none opposed, the motion passes.
So that's approved, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And we'll move to the next item.
Next item is public hearing item number two, LPC twenty two dash zero two five seven four, application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Brooklyn, block three oh seven, lot forty nine, two thirty one Baltic Street in the Coppel Hill Historic District. This is an Italianate style rowhouse built circa eighteen fifty, and the application is to construct a rear yard addition.
Applicants have joined the hearing. Please just click on the presentation to advance the slides and state your name for the record you may begin.
Okay, this is Brendan Coburn, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Excellent. So Brendan Coburn, architect for this project, could I have the first slide, please? Oh. This is a, their proposal, the the primary reason for this proposal is the rear yard extension. Photograph in the upper left corner is showing the existing rear yard extension, which is eight feet deep. The house to the west of that house also has an eight foot deep extension. We are proposing to extend the extension an additional ten feet to make it a total of eighteen feet deep. And we will be using, we will be using salvaged brick for the two side walls of this particular project so that the neighbors on either side are looking at something similar to what they already are. Can I have the next slide, please? This is the analysis of the building heights and extensions on the, on the surrounding block. Our project is number two thirty one, if you could just put the cursor there. You can see there are two houses with eight foot extensions. The house two twenty seven, two to the west, has a eighteen foot, three story extension. And then the building two two five in yellow is a, is now an apartment building. So it is almost full lot at four stories extension. There are, there's another twelve foot extension nearby on two thirty five across the donut, are a range of seven to ten foot on average extensions, generally all sort of two story extensions. Next slide, please. This is an axonometric study of the proposed bulk of our extension. So you can, so this is looking towards the west. So you can see our existing eight foot extension with our proposed additional ten foot extension along with, we've got it in the, the, the small porch or deck that's extending off the back of the house. You can then also see the house to the west that has the existing eight foot extension that remains. And then beyond that, the three story eighteen foot extension of two twenty seven and then finally two twenty five, which is the now an apartment building. Next slide, please. Just plot plan, next slide, please. We are also doing restorative work on the front facade. I will just breeze through this because it's being handled at staff level. But it's, it's, the, we are replacing the brownstone sidewalls and areaway walls, restoring the ironwork. We have the next slide, please. Next slide, this is just existing conditions. So just a very quick overview that you can see on the right, the existing masonry walls and the, the, the plinth level or garden level of the house has had its detail removed. And we are proposing to restore the detail to the plinth. We are proposing to replicate, replicate the original ironwork for this house on the stoop. And we are proposing to change the windows from one over ones to two over twos. Next slide, please. I think we could just skip Margaret to, to the rear facade stuff. Okay, so again, existing conditions of the rear facade, fairly typical, covered in paint and stucco and schmutz. And we have, we, I guess the next slide would be fine. Keep going. Okay, so this is, explains the Okay, so this is, explains the project, so existing uh, facade on the right-hand side, a two-story extension currently coming out, fire escape on the back of the building. Uh, previous use was as a four-family house, uh, we are restoring it to single-family usage. Um, the proposed facade is on the left and you can see it's a two-story facade, the uh, windows on the upper floors, the punched openings on the upper floors remain the same. On the second floor, the middle window sill gets dropped to deck level and we are putting a green roof outside, green roof and a very small deck outside of that room. Our extension down below has the uh, large sort of two-story opening with an expressed um, spandrel, uh, a small uh, deck on the right, which is really because the house is on the north side of the facade. Um, we have a very minimal amount of outdoor space there and we're encouraging people to just get down into the backyard. Um, and then on the left side, you see a small Juliet balcony, these are large um, wood uh, sliding doors that the two outer leaves slide in on both the parlor and garden floor. Um, and that is the reason for the Juliet balcony on the left. Can we go to the next slide? These are just the sidewalls, so we are going to uh, see on the um, on the east side, you're going to see the uh, added and toothed in reclaimed brick for the extension and then on the west side, you can see that we're just building again reclaimed and toothing in uh, brick on that facade. We'll, we'll be hopefully getting most of this brick out of the removal of the back wall of the existing extension and then modification of some parlor and garden floor rear wall openings that exist inside the current extension. Next slide, please. Um, just uh, some context photos, so this is from our existing roof on the eight-foot building, looking out over at the three-story eighteen-foot extension. Next, please. This is the extension to the east, which is a uh, another two-story, I think it's a twelve-foot deep extension. Next slide, please. Not full width, that one, by the way. And I think finally, this is just our uh, color study of the elevation. Um, entirely, the the new building will be uh, you know, a a four-inch brick uh, wall on on eight-inch reinforced CMU with a sort of large, simple opening, uh, the wood, the painted wood uh, window and door system and then a small uh, iron railing up at the top floor, which is then repeated at the step at the um, little deck, Juliet balcony and stairs to the garden. Uh, could I just look at, uh, yeah, the next sheet quickly? This is just a plan, the existing building footprint and paved area and the proposed building area and footprint, this is just to help explain the um, the small deck that comes down off of the rear extension and then uh, and then the layout of the garden. I think at this point, I'm done, we could go back to the previous L one eighteen.
Okay, thank you. All right, commissioners, do we have any questions? Okay, not seeing any questions, I I don't um, think we have anyone signed up for this item, but let's uh, see if we have anyone here to speak. I'll turn it over to Lisa Cris Savage to take us through any testimony.
Yes, and and it, we don't have anybody signed up, if you'd like to speak though, you could raise your hand and I can call you. Raise your virtual hand. And I don't see any hands raised.
Okay, great. And I'll also note for the record that Brooklyn Community Board Six recommended approval of the application. Okay, well, I think unless Brendan, there's any final comment you'd like to make, we can move to our discussion.
I don't think so.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
So commissioners, please unmute yourself or accept my request to unmute. Commissioner Chapin, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
Motion to close the hearing.
Thank you. Commissioner Shamir Baron, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, the hearing is closed and we'll begin our discussion. Commissioner Gustafson, would you like to start this one?
Sure, you give me an easy one. All of the changes aren't visible, it it doesn't project any further than other other uh, extend rear yard extensions in the in the uh, on the block. It doesn't rise to the full height, it preserves the two top floors. Uh, can find no fault with this, this is uh, appropriate as is.
All right, great, thank you. Commissioner Shamir Baron?
I agree with everything Mr. Gustafson just said and, you know, we've approved beef kind of uh, window replacements with a large expansive glass on this non-visible donut side, so I think this is entirely appropriate.
All right, great, thank you. Commissioner Holford Smith?
I agree.
Commissioner Chapin?
Yes, I also agree with the the comment of the previously stated by the commissioners.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Agreed, as John said, appropriate.
Commissioner Devonshire?
Yeah, it's appropriate, I I like that they're salvaging and reusing materials, they're actually, they're using real bluestone and not uh, cast stone. It's a great approach and much appreciated, approved.
Thank you. Commissioner Chen? Commissioner Chen?
Sorry, my headphone is now uh, coming in and out, I had to replace it, uh, so I agree with all the comments, especially Commissioner Devonshire's comments.
Okay, thanks. And and Vice Chair Bland?
I'm in total agreement with what has been said here before.
All right, great, so this is a nice project and
Mr. Jefferson?
Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Jefferson, please go ahead.
Appropriate.
Thank you. I think um, this was an easy one, but it, there are definitely positive things to say about it and so I appreciate all of the comments. So Commissioner Gustafson, would you make the motion?
In the matter of LPC twenty-two dash zero-two-five-seven-four-two-thirty-one Baltic Street in the Cobble Hill Historic District, the application is to construct a rear yard addition, I note that the building's style, scale, materials and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Cobble Hill Historic District. I recommend approval noting that the work will not damage or eliminate any significant architectural features, that the proposed rear yard addition will not be visible from a public thoroughfare, that the proposed addition will not project further into the rear yard than existing additions within the block and will not diminish the presence of a rear yard or a cohesive central green space, that the proposed addition, which is an extension to the existing two-yard, two-story rear yard addition, will be similar in height to other rear yard additions within the block, that the proposed addition will not rise to the full height of the building thereby maintaining a sense of the building's original massing, that the materiality of the rear addition featuring brick cladding and metal and glass window and door assemblies will be in keeping with the materials palette within the block and that the work will not diminish the special architectural character of the building or the historic district.
Thank you. And Commissioner Jefferson, would you second that motion?
I second the motion.
Thank you. And Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Holford Smith?
Aye.
With ten in favor and none opposed, the motion passes.
That's approved, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
And we'll move to the next item.
Next item is public hearing item number three, LPC twenty-one dash zero-six-seven-eight-one, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Brooklyn, block eleven sixty-five, lot fifteen, two eighty-two Park Place in the Prospect Heights Historic District. This is a Renaissance Revival-style rowhouse with Romanesque Revival elements designed by William H. Reynolds and built circa eighteen ninety-seven and the application is to construct a stoop.
Um, the applicant has joined the hearing, um, you now have control of the presentation, um, please unmute yourself and state your name for the record and you may begin. So James, if you could just unmute yourself?
Good morning. Uh, sorry, I was having trouble with my screen controls for a moment. All right, so uh, this is two eighty-two Park Place, um, the main idea
State your name for the record, please?
I'm sorry, this is James DeRosa, uh, this is in regards to two eighty-two Park Place, LPC two ninety-one uh, oh-six-seven-eight-one. The premise of the project is to install a front stoop. The existing townhouse did have a front stoop prior, but uh, it was removed uh, somewhere between the eighty, uh, between the original text photo of thirty-nine and uh, later text photo of eighty-seven. As you can see in these photos, so the idea is to bring back the front stoop, but we wanted to bring back a straight run, so uh, as you can see, two eighty, the adjacent property has the L shape, which we originally had as well, this is our building, two eighty-two in its current state and then we have two eighty-four Park Place, the adjacent property on the left with a straight run stair. These are existing photos of details on the actual facade of our building. Uh, front door on the lower floor, uh, lower floor. And as you can see in this upper window, this is actually a window that will be removed and turned into the front stoop entry. Steel detail to remain, railings to be removed, so forth. All the details above will remain and if anything refurbished. This is a uh, reference dialogue of the uh, front stoops, actually you can't really see the line, but there is a line referencing the the offset of the front stoop, essentially they average about thirty-three inches from the front property lines. Uh, and that's the the same line that we're landing on as well to create an alignment. Um, and you can also see the pattern of, or lack thereof, of L shapes versus um, straight run stairs. Other details will be pulling from the rest of the block are um, metal, black and metal railings, uh, the stone uh, coping stones and the cast stone scrolls. Um, as you can see, this is the plans, uh, demo on the right, new construction or proposed on the left. For the demolition, uh, we will be removing the railings on the ground story, removing that window on the upper story. Um, and we're going to change the pivot of this door, which is not um, evident from the street. We'll be installing a new knee wall at the front, uh, to match the adjacent properties on both sides of the stoop. Extend the stoop all the way to the front entry, we'll discuss the door later. And uh, yes, install the coping stones and scrolls at the underside. Onto the elevation or for lighting, uh, we're just installing three fixtures that are visible, the one adjacent to the entry on the ground story and then two into the main entry. The elevation of the same information, here's the removal of the existing uh, stone wall that is there, the removal of the railings and then this is our front facade, I'll zoom in for more information. The uh, here's the new stucco finish wall here. And there's a new one here as well, perpendicular to the stair. Or to the property line, rather, there are the scrolls here, coping stones, railing and then the new front door. Uh, side elevation, we will, we plan on having, uh, I shall go back. There are three horizontal split-faced stone uh, details on the front facade, we will be pulling those across at the same elevation on the side of the stoop. Um, all of the finishes that are flush will be stucco finish, score with score lines. Uh, the cast stone lines will be the ones that match the adjacent face, cast stone coping stones and a cast stone scroll, uh, and then we'll have the black and metal railings. As you can see on the left side, this is actually the color of the uh, lower facade, um, so we'll use our stucco to match that. Um, and then this is the light fixture that we're proposing for this space. And this is the other side, uh, so this is on the side of uh, two eighty-four Park Place. Uh, we will be extending our lines aligned to our building still, uh, but there was comment from the uh, community board to apply some sort of um, split-face detailing on this side, so uh, we agreed and so we added it. So for the front doors, uh, we have, this is the um, same front door that we have there, we're just changing pivot. The other is going to be a um, two uh, a pair of door uh, with three-quarter glass in the front and all of our detailing for metals will be in a polished chrome. There's just more uh, more detailing of the same information uh, in section, the two directions. And this is that little knee wall to give you a little bit more information about where it's going, that side one. And then more detailed information. And then we included an appendix of information explaining all of the showing each building along the street, we can reference this in discussion, uh, but I don't need to go through this right now. A few references uh, that we have are um, metal railing details from the adjacent properties um, and coping stone with the uh, scrolls. And the metal railing detail here. And this is another uh, project that we references up as well, you'll see that there is, uh, they do not have their detailing around the door that has been discussed. As you can see, there's usually some sort of transom detail. But I will leave it to the board to discuss now.
Okay, thank you. So do we have any questions, commissioners? All right, so not seeing any questions at this time, we'll move to public testimony and we may have questions after that, so I'm going to turn it over to Lisa Cris Savage to take us through the testimony and if you're in the meeting and would like to speak on this item, please raise your virtual hand so we can identify you.
Okay, thank you, um, we'll start with Mary Schuford. And Mary, I'll bring you in now. And please just state your name for the record.
Uh, my name is Mary Schuford, I'm uh, with Prospect Heights Neighborhood Development Corporation in the Prospect Heights Historic District. As you know, this is an application is to restore the stoop that was ren- removed prior to nineteen eighty-seven and the application reflects significant effort to conform to the context and materials of the other buildings in the borough of twenty-two houses. However, the applicant has chosen a straight run stair rather than the L shape of the original stoop. They've agreed that the length of the stoop will match the length of the neighboring straight run stair at two eighty-four, the uh, adjoining building and others in the group. The first floor facades in this group of buildings typically are faced with smooth stone, rusticated stone or a combination of smooth and rusticated stone. The base of the stoop always matches the style of the first floor facade. The stoop courses align with the stair treads, not with the facade courses. Two eighty-two Park Place's photo shows layered, smooth and rusticated stone. It appears in the nineteen thirty-nine tax photo that the original stoop was rusticated stone on the eastern side with a strip of the facade to the left of the stoop that continued to with a strip of the facade to the left of the stoop that continued the layered pattern of the facade. The applicant has agreed that the brownstone finish for the stoop will reflect the layered, smooth and rusticated patterns of the building facades in the group. Since neither the rusticated stone knee wall nor the fence along the front of the property appears to be original, the applicant has agreed to remove the railing and restore the knee wall to conform with that of the adjacent property and other buildings in the group. Overall, we appreciate the significant efforts that the applicant has made to restore the stoop in a way that reflects the materials and context of the row of buildings in the original group. Thank you for the opportunity to submit our testimony.
Okay, thank you. And next I'll call George Calderaro. George, please unmute yourself, turn on the video if you like.
Can you hear me, Lisa?
Yes, now I can.
Great, thank you. Good morning, commissioners. George Calderaro, Chair of the Preservation Committee of the Victorian Society, New York. When we first looked at this proposal, we were very pleased to see that the applicants are proposing to construct a new stoop at this row house. We found that the materials, proportions and details are all appropriate, but we wondered why the applicants were proposing a straight stoop when the tax photo shows that the house originally had a box stoop. We then checked the designation report and it states that 282 Park Place is one of a row of 22 Renaissance Revival style row houses by builder William Reynolds. And then none of the houses in the row are identical. So we, uh, decided to make a site visit to see if there was much variation in the design of the historic stoops. We found that five of these row houses have straight stoops and just as the main facades of these houses have great variety in their details, there's also a significant variation among all of the 21 stoops still in place. Therefore, while we would like to see, uh, the restoration of the original box stoop at 282, we can recommend approval of this well-detailed straight stoop in its place. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And finally Historic District Council.
Hi, um, this is Kathy Brill speaking on behalf of the Historic Districts Council. HDC sees the stoop addition as a well-thought-out project and commends the excellent attention to detail. Uh, the high level of design, detail and documentation by the architects should be noted by LPC as a standard for future comparable projects. We hope that the execution of the project by the contractor does justice to this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. And I don't see any other hands raised.
Okay, great, and I, uh, can note for the record that we received a resolution from Brooklyn Community Board 8 recommending approval of the application with the condition that the length of the stoop matched the length of the stairs on, uh, sister buildings and that the half arch under the stair be restored. And I think that we did hear from you that the length what, and heard from testimony, other testimony, that the length will match the others. If you'd like to respond to any of the comments you've heard, please go ahead.
I believe that, I mean, that makes sense, uh, we did match the length.
Okay, commissioners, do we have any final questions? Alright, I am starting to unmute you all, or requesting to unmute you, so, oops. Got it, okay. So Commissioner, uh, Bland, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
I'm moved.
Commissioner Devonshire, would you second that motion?
Second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the hearing is closed and we'll begin our discussion, and this is a proposal to restore a stoop to this building. Um, and the reason it is before us is because it historically was an L-shaped stoop and they're proposing a straight run stoop. And have presented that there is variety in both the configuration and details within the block. So Commissioner Holford Smith, would you, um, like to start this one?
Yes, thank you. Well, first I'd like to commend the applicant for, uh, taking us on to restore the stoop back to something similar to a traditional configuration, so a very big improvement to look at this building. Um, I think that going back with a straight run, um, can be found appropriate given the wide variety of stoops in the neighborhood. And, and so given the existing conditions of, of the street. I think the details are well thought out. My only comment really was caught my attention. The applicant mentioned that they were going to put that hardware in that polished chrome finish. And that seems a little un繫綿 stick with the style and nature of the building, so I'd ask if they would perhaps work with staff. I think otherwise it's a good application.
Okay, great, Commissioner Chapin?
Uh, I think in general, this is a, you know, excellent proposal and that the, uh, details, the materials of the proposed stoop will fit in very well with the district and the row.
Okay, thanks. Commissioner Goldblum?
I agree, I think it's appropriate. I think Ann's comment about the chrome is correct and they should work with staff on them.
Okay, Commissioner Devonshire?
I agree, it's appropriate. And I also agree with Ann's comments about the hardware.
Thanks, Commissioner Chen?
I see, I agree with the comments, especially with Ann's.
Okay, Commissioner Bland?
Uh, I just want to also commend, as others have done, the re-insulation of a stoop. Um, I can remember, maybe it was 25 years ago when the Brooklyn Heights Association and its annual awards program gave an award with such hoopla, uh, because somebody was putting a stoop back. It just was unheard of. And now we see them all the time and, uh, and it's thrilling to see yet another one. Um, I think the Victorian Society, uh, testimony was, um, spot on in terms of, um, why it's appropriate that this could be a straight run instead of the L shape that, which originally this house, which I had agreed to, which I would agree as well with, so. Bravo, and this is quite appropriate, even heroic.
Thank you, Commissioner Jefferson?
I agree with all the comments and I, I think it's appropriate.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Uh, you had me at stoop.
Great, Commissioner Shamir Baron?
I think this is appropriate.
Okay, alright, great, so I think we have, all are in agreement that this is appropriate. Fits within the variety that we see in the row and, um, is, has careful and well-thought-out details that will also relate to the row. Um, and I think we have, uh, many who have requested that they restart the hardware and consultation with the staff, so we'll add that to the motion. Commissioner Holford Smith, would you make that motion?
In the matter of LPC 21-06781, 282 Park Place in the Prospect Heights Historic District. A Renaissance Revival style row house with Romanesque revival elements designed by William H. Reynolds and built circa 1897. Applications to construct a stoop. I note that the building's style, scale, materials and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Prospect Heights Historic District. I also note that this building's row historically featured a mix of box stoops and straight stoops, the majority of which remain. Uh, I recommend approval, finding that the proposed work will not eliminate any significant historic fabric, but the placement proportions, finishes and details of post-stoop, handrail and areaway knee wall will be compatible with the design of this building and in keeping with other stoops and areaway walls found throughout the streetscape. But although the straight configuration of the new stoop will vary from the configuration of the historic box stoop, the row features a variety of stoop configurations, details and finishes across both flat and projecting bay facades, thus supporting the presence of straight run stoops in this building. That the materials of the new stoop, including masonry and brownstone tinted stucco, will closely match the historic brownstone in terms of finished texture profiles and details. That the rustication of the size of the new stoop will align the rusticated stone at the base of the building thus unifying and enhancing this historic feature of the facade. That the new stoop will facilitate the restoration of the polished floor entry door removed prior to the designation of the Historic District. And as the only remaining building in the row lacking a stoop, the work will return the building and the row closer to its start. Uh, and that the work will enhance the special architectural and historic character of the building, streetscape and the Prospect Heights Historic District. And that the applicant will work with staff to, um, find an appropriate finish for the new door hardware.
Great, thanks, and I, I think it just was brought to my attention that the hardware anyway is being reviewed at staff level. So the staff will take those comments into consideration as they review it. And, um, otherwise we're recommending straight approval of this stoop. Okay, uh, Mark, will you call the vote? Oh, wait, we need a second, Commissioner Chapin, if you have a second? Yes, Commissioner Chapin? We second them.
Second, so.
Thank you, okay, Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Holford Smith?
Aye.
With 10 in favor and none opposed, the motion passes.
Thank you. And we'll move to the next item.
Next item is public hearing item number four, LPC 20-06753. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of the Bronx, block 2461, lot 90, 1,000 Grand Concourse, AKA 161 East 164th Street in the Grand Concourse Historic District. This is an Art Deco style apartment building designed by Sugarman and Burger and built in 1935. And the application is to replace windows.
Um, you now have control of the presentation, just click on the screen to activate and advance the slides and just state your name for the record and you may begin.
I'm sorry about the camera, I, I had it on for a second, but it actually looked horrible. I, I don't know what the settings are, so we'll do it this way. This is Dave Howard, um, I'm with Icon Windows and Doors along with Jim Cousy and, and Jose Magar and they are the, uh, the architects on this place. But I'll be walking through the, uh, the presentation today. Okay, so 1,000 Grand Concourse, this is our subject building. Um, it falls in the, uh, in the, in the Grand Concourse Historic District, LP 2403. Um, from the next slide, you can see its location, uh, of the west facade facing directly on, uh, Grand Concourse or Grand Boulevard with the north facade being visible from 164th Street. Uh, there is a section of the, uh, I'm sorry, the south facade on 164th. Uh, there is a section of the north facade that you can see, um, from the, uh, from the adjacent block uh, as designated by the red arrow. You could probably see that center, um, the center column right here, uh, that would be the most visible area. Um, the typical conditions in the district, as noted, this is an Art Deco style, um, built in the second wave of, of development in this area designated Landmark Historic, uh, about 10 years ago. Here's the 1940s tax photo, these are the two photos that we used, uh, with the staff, um, at length to try to determine, uh, materials. Um, you know, swings and, and, and other attributes of the windows. As you can see, it's, it's interesting that there are, there are punched openings, uh, which were historically double hungs as well as these casement windows, uh, in the corner and in kind of a wraparound design in the Art Deco fashion. Uh, here you can see what's currently there. Um, and as you can see, these windows were replaced, um, sometime obviously prior to 2011. Um, and they were replaced with, um, aluminum double hung and they have fallen into, uh, into disrepair for the building along with the facade. So this was interesting, um, to me, this is the, the remaining, uh, double hung window. This is in, um, essentially a, it, it backs up to a trash container area, so it's not visible. But this was, uh, the remaining historic steel double hung that we were, uh, able to pull what we thought, what we think is, uh, and we all agree on is the original color. So we scraped down, uh, the original double hung to the bare metal and then took the closest color that was on the metal. And we came to the conclusion that our closest matching color would be RAL 1001, uh, which is, I'm sorry, RAL 9001, which is, uh, it's kind of like a cream color and I'll show it on the next slide. So this is the color, um, that we came up with for the, for the windows. Um, and obviously the staff that we were working with and our architects that we're working with um, agreed that this color right here closely matched, uh, our sample and it accentuates the original brick, which I believe is being restored. Um, this is actually mislabeled, this first building right here, this shows some, uh, some window replacements that have been done, uh, more recently. This is 940, the next one is labeled 940, but this is actually 960. And as you can see, um, we've replaced with, uh, with similar color windows as well. This slide shows the six over four, uh, light dividers as we, uh, as we work through the details from the tax photos. Obviously, we have to accommodate for modern conveniences being air conditioning. Um, this air conditioning unit was specified by the, the building owner and respect by their, the architect as being sufficient for the sizes of the, of the units. We propose to have an insulated panel around the, uh, the, the air conditioning unit. As you'll see on another slide, which is also replaceable with either an IGU or insulated panel with the same, uh, four light, four light divider pattern. And this shows the facade facing 164th Street. Um, as you can see, we keep the six over four light divider pattern, uh, as well as the, uh, the air conditioning panel as needed, which is removable. This shows the operation and some of the details on the window. What we're proposing is what we're, what we have is a simulated double hung with a removable bottom sash to accommodate the, uh, the air conditioning unit as needed. The glazing, the U-value on these averages out to a point two six, which is significantly lower than that of the, uh, current energy code. And the majority of the windows fall under a point two one U-value, so we feel that these windows will, will keep the, uh, the, will be much more efficient. Um, not only up to standards now, but also in the future energy codes. This also shows the month and million details, uh, in a, in a pattern that we feel is consistent with the original. Here shows our structural column, uh, for the wraparound corners, uh, and some details. Uh, the bottom right shows the two, uh, bending to two and the top left shows the two, uh, going into one on several corners. This shows a little bit more detail on the air conditioning units, um, which was a, a, a large, I would say, it was a concern for the community board to make sure that we have an, uh, an appropriate, uh, response to, uh, the comfort of the tenants that reside inside the building. Um, the community board agreed that this is obviously a sufficient and efficient, um, uh, solution for that. Um, as you see, we've got a fixed panel, it's an insulated panel, the same width of an IGU, uh, that is fit around the specific, uh, air conditioning unit that goes in the unit with the rack, uh, as proposed. When the tenant is not operating the air conditioning unit, we can remove the fixed panel in the AC unit, the building can store, and we can have a, a, a panel that matches the light divider design installed for more efficient, uh, and livable space. We do have an appendix here, um, I do want to point out, uh, on one of these appendix pages, um, right, I think it's 18, right here, you'll see our, uh, historic double hung. Uh, this is an existing, a historic casement from a building that is not ours. This was taken from, I believe, 1,012, uh, Grand Concourse we walked over, but we wanted to include it in our presentation so you can see the, the, the frame material being steel and our, uh, our windows are, are made in such a fashion to mimic the existing steel or what the, the, the historic steel.
Great, thank you, commissioners, do we have any questions?
Yeah.
Yes, go ahead.
So was there any data on the, um, old original corner detail at those corner windows? Were you able to find anything at all, either photographically or in, in person?
You know, the only thing that we had to go with was the, was those two photos that were in here. And obviously knowing from the time and, uh, and, uh, the Sugarman and Burger, uh, designed the New York Hotel, we tried to take photos from some of their previous work to get some color on that. Their steel out- Their steel outswing casements, the bottom six open, the top four were, were closed, but they were not consistent with the punched openings. But we don't have a whole lot of detail on, on them, other than the materials, you know, being steel and, and single pane.
Fair enough. And is there a plan for the placement of those air conditioners? In other words, are they all going to be in one row? Or they, or can, can people put them anywhere they like?
You know, and, and, and that's, that's a great question. And that's one of the reasons why we're proposing the same window type. Throughout the entire building as, as opposed to trying to match the outswing casement with the double hung for the punched openings. Is because on the building as it stands now, the tenants have probably become accustomed where their air conditioning is now. And they are all over the place. You know, we've got some in the punched openings. You've got some on the second of the wraparound windows and, and it's kind of a, you know, there's not really any consistency there.
So let's say you've got your corner window. If someone on the second floor wants to use the left side and someone on the right, on the third floor wants to use the right side, they can do that?
That's currently how the building is operated. That's currently what the tenants are used to. And obviously part of our community board discussions were, were around tenant involvement and interaction and, and inconvenience to the tenants when things are being moved around in their, in their apartment. So that's how it's run now. I mean, as far as I'm, I'm, my concern from a window manufacturer standpoint. That's really between the tenants and the building. And I don't really want to rock the boat, but if that's something that we need to address, we, 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 we could.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Holford Smith.
Yeah, I had a question about the corner windows as well. Can you tell me the, the difference between the existing corner panning on the. The placement windows and the one that you're proposing? Are they the same size?
No, there's.
You're smaller.
Ours are much slimmer. And in fact, we get roughly twelve percent more light. We've got twelve percent larger glazing area across the board. And on the corner windows, that's actually larger than the double hungs. But our, our, our overall glazing area is larger. So the, the frame, the sash and the corner detail is going to be slimmer. Because we're using obviously more modern thermally broken aluminum materials.
Thank you.
All right, other questions? Okay, I'm not seeing any other questions at this time. We might have more after we hear public testimony, but we'll now move to the testimony portion of the item. If you're in the meeting and would like to testify on this item, please raise your virtual hand. We'll start with anyone who signed up in advance, but raise your hand whether or not you signed up so we can identify you. And I'll turn it over to Lisa Chris Savage to take us through the testimony.
Okay, thank you. I'll start with George Calderaro.
Hello again, Commissioners. George Calderaro, Chair of the Preservation Committee of the Victorian Society, New York. And a board member of the Art Deco Society, New York, although today I'm testifying for the Victorian Society. When we looked at this proposal, we were pleased to see that the applicants are proposing to remove the modern one over one double hung aluminum windows. But we were surprised to see that they hadn't included historic photographs showing the original window configurations. We looked at the nineteen forty tax photo referenced in the designation report, but not provided in the presentation. The photo shows the quote, "original multi-pane double hung sashes and multi-pane steel casement sashes at corner window openings." Unquote, which had been replaced by the time of designation. We also found an excellent nineteen thirty-six photograph in the collection of the Museum of the City of New York. These two historic photos show that one thousand grand concourse had six over six double hung windows in the three feet wide punched window openings. And multi-light casement windows at the corners. The larger side of the corner windows appears to have had a pair of operable casements with fixed transom and sidelines, all with matching panel pane sizes. The smaller side of the corner windows may have had single operable casements with fixed transom and sidelines. The old casement shown in slide twelve of the presentation is of a configuration in size not visible in the historic pictures of the building. The nineteen thirty-six photographs attached in our written testimony show how important the original window design is to this building. Commissioners, none of the windows the applicant is proposing match the historic windows. Instead of the two types, original to the building, six over six double hung windows and multi-light casements. The applicant is proposing one type of window in every opening, a simulated double hung window. Which is actually a Frankenstein window, an unholy combination which joins a fixed six light upper section to a four light tilt and turn lower section. Which can then be ganged together in the larger openings. In addition to the incorrect configuration and operation, many of the framing members are too heavy. We urge you to take no action today and to instruct the applicant to obtain a copy of the nineteen forty tax photo referenced in the designation report. And the photo from the Museum of the City of New York and working with staff, come back with revised proposal. Matching the original configuration, operations, materials, details and finish as closely as possible. As the first generation of replacement windows in buildings like this fail, we shouldn't lose this chance to get it right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And next I'll call Historic District Council.
Hi, this is Kathy Rove, speaking on behalf of the Historic District Council. HTC appreciates the window replacement project. However, the proposed use of aluminum fenestration is inappropriate. As opposed to the original window scheme, which was a handsome thermally broken multi-pane steel system. The new windows should be as such. This issue is especially prominent because the proposed aluminum requires corner pieces that are still too thick and heavy, which detracts from the appearance of the mulling system. The original steel windows allow a much lighter glassy corner finish seen in the original design. It is also regrettable that the window unit air conditioning is a persisting part of this design. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I don't see any other hands raised. Okay, thank you. And I'll just note for the record that Bronx Community Board Four sent a letter in support of the application to replace windows. But with proposed changes, one, that the replacements will be factory finished with an optional AC feature for tenants. Two, that tenants will opt if, opt in if they would like to replace with an AC feature. And if opting in, AC feature will come in two designs for tenants to choose from. And that the replacement will be made in, in aluminum to adhere to current and future building codes. And so with those, they support the application. So I'd like to turn back to Mr. Howard. Would you like to respond to the comments that we've heard? And I think if you go to page six, you do have the historic photograph in your presentation.
Yes, and I'll, and I'll try to address it. And, and look, you know, getting to the, getting to the, the historic nature of the building is something that we strive to do. And in this particular project, taking into consideration the, the tenants. I guess I went too far on that. The tenants' concerns, which, which were being taken throughout this building. And, and taking into consideration their, their current comfort level in their, in their air conditioning. I mean, that was, that was a large driver for this design. And as far as the, the aluminum being thick and heavy, while not as thin as steel. Taking into consideration the, the non-thermally broken original and the lack of any original windows in this building. I believe that our design gets closer while remaining consistent with the comfort of the existing tenants and not disrupting their lives.
Okay, thank you. Did you want to respond to your choice of the configuration? I know that you're changing it to accommodate the AC for the tenants.
The tenants have, have two choices given by the building owner. From what I understand, the building owner give them two choices of, of air conditioning styles. There's two different models. We've been given those two different models to our manufacturing and we will manufacture the panels consistent with the choice that each tenant chooses. So like we mentioned, if, if it's the third outside corner window and they choose air conditioning number two. That's the panel and the air conditioning configuration that we will provide for them. So, and they will be factory finished consistent with the rest of the, of the window in RAL nine zero zero one.
Right. Okay, I, I think I was just trying to get at the bigger question of choosing not to replicate the historic configuration of the windows. Because you are accommodating HVAC for existing tenants, but why you feel the proposed multi-light configuration is in the spirit of the historic.
Exactly. I mean, we, we think that the month and a million size and shape and the, and the steel look aluminum, that's the, the proposed windows in SL thirty-eight. It's a steel look window. So it's made to mimic steel. We get closer to the original Art Deco style while taking into consideration the, the current needs of the tenants.
Okay. Commissioners, any final questions? All right, I am starting to send requests to unmute. So that we can close the hearing and begin our discussion. And Commissioner Jefferson, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
Make a motion to close the hearing?
Thank you. Commissioner Devonshire, would you second that motion?
Second the motion.
All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the hearing is closed and we'll begin our discussion. And then this has been presented, this building historically featured a combination of multi-light double hung windows. And which, multi-light double hung wood windows and casement in the larger openings, steel, multi-light steel casement windows. And, and the applicant, and at, by the time of designation, all of the windows, except that one remainder in a non-visible location. Had been replaced with one over one double hung windows and that was what was there at the time of designation and those windows are very deteriorated. And the applicant is proposing to remove those one over one double hung windows and replace them with a new multi-light metal window. That would accommodate HVAC units for existing tenants. And in order to do so, is changing the configuration to be a standard configuration to be able to accommodate those panels. And I'll, you know, I'll just note that we have historically. In the case of full building wide replacement or master plan, allowed for a change in configuration. In, in, in. Finding some merit in getting a, a standard approach to the building. And in particular, we have approved, in steel casement windows, we have approved shifting number of panes and configuration to accommodate HVAC. Units within windows, particularly at rental buildings where the tenants, that landlord is required to, to provide HVAC for tenants. So with that as sort of the context, we'll go ahead and start our discussion. And I will start with our Bronx representative, Commissioner Goldblum. Please go ahead.
Thank you. This is a, a huge win, I think. I think this is a, an exemplary project. That's well within the standards that we've approved in other buildings in much more rarefied locations. And this is such an important district in the Bronx. And so much of the district is reliant on the windows. You know, Art Deco buildings equals the steel sash, highly articulated windows. And there's hardly a one that has the original windows left. So the promise of, of designation of this district lies in great part, I think, in the. Devising of solutions like this to restore the texture to the buildings, the historic texture to the buildings in creative ways. And I want to note that this is being done with incredibly high-performance windows. And I think in the drawings, they show triple glazed windows. That's, that's amazing. So kudos to the ownership and to the, uh, design team for, for putting it forward. I have no problem with the modification of the operation. We've seen it in lots of different locations, up and down Central Park West and different places that are characterized by windows of this nature. I think the profiles look good. I think the color, to my eye, looking at the historic photos, looks a little light, but I think they could work with staff on that. And I think that the corner post is an interesting detail in this kind of building. Looking at one of the two historic photos, it looks like the corner post is kind of an outie that it projects beyond the face of the glass. And creates a kind of articulated post. In the second photo, it looks flush. So I would just ask them to, again, work with staff to work that out. And finally, I would ask them to work with staff on determining some form of uniform plan for the placement of the air conditioning. Units when they occur within the same room as they do with the corners, I believe. So that there can be some template or pattern that would, yes, constrain the tenants slightly in placement of the units within a single room.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Devonshire.
How could I follow up with anything more articulate than Commissioner Goldblum? That was just perfectly said. He is absolutely correct. I've, it, you know, the air conditioning situation, you know, because these buildings were constructed before even window air conditioners, everyone had fans. We're going to be messing around with this kind of stuff forever. So I, I would say good luck trying to get tenants to unify their air conditioning placement. We're, we're never going to do that. But in, in my opinion, this is an admirable approach to window replacement. Finally, it'll, you know, unless you replace steel with steel, we're never going to have exact replication of, of size and thickness. This is about as close as you can get.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Chen.
Give me now?
Yes, just barely, but.
Barely. I have to replace my headphone. I, I totally agree with Michael's, the two Michael's, especially the, the comments. And I do agree that the light, the color might be a little bit too light, but they can work with the staff.
Okay, great. Thank you. Commissioner Bland.
Yeah, I'm in agreement as well. I, I think the. I, I think the accommodation of the air conditioning units according to the needs of the tenant. Is a reasonable sort of thing to accept in a building like this. And I think that. The overall regular, regularization of the windows themselves will help mollify any discordance or chaotic, chaotic look. And I think it perhaps unreasonable to think that they're going to be organized anyway, but I'm not sure that it's even necessary. I think it's, it's, it's fine as is. And I think it was a very complete and compelling presentation.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Jefferson.
I agree with all my fellow commissioners and their comments.
Okay, Commissioner Gustafson.
Yeah, I, I agree as well. I would only note the following, and that is that, you know, I heard the testimony and, and while. You know, there may be some good ideas out there. The bottom line is that our standard is not most appropriate, but it's appropriate. And I think that as the Commissioner Goldblum explained, this, this schemata is, is certainly appropriate. Whether it's the ultimate or not, it certainly is appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Shamir Baron.
I, I agree with Commissioner Bland's point about the sort of, the lead here being the cleaning up of the air conditioning units. And making sort of a standard for them. I, I don't think though, that these, that the, as well produced as they are and specified as they may be. The windows do not, I think. As they've been presented at all, really replicate. And I understand the intention is not exactly to replicate, but I just don't think they meet the standard of, of sort of replacement of the historic fabric. Of the steel windows. But I, and, and so that I find appropriateness because there is some. Sort of cure happening here with respect to the air conditioning units and their sort of uniformity. I don't know that that's, that's the best kind of criteria, but that's the one I would use for appropriateness here. And, and could.
Okay, but just, I, I just want to make sure I understand. So I, but you did say you agreed with Commissioner Bland about not needing a particular. about not needing a particular set location for the unit, is that right? Even though, okay, but you're finding them appropriate in that it is a standard solution for HVAC?
For HVAC. And, and I would not necessarily agree with Commissioner Goldblum's assessment of the kind of virtue of these particular windows as replacement for the steel, but that's just a perspective.
Okay. Right. Commissioner Holford Smith?
Um, I think I'm, I can find this appropriate. I, I little chagrin that they couldn't have found a solution to replace the six-over-six with an equal double-hung window configuration. I'm not quite sure why that couldn't have been accommodated. But as Christian Gustafson said, that would have been the most appropriate. But I still think that this is appropriate, and it's definitely a step in the right direction to bring this building back to much more in keeping with the search.
Okay, great. Commissioner Chapin?
Yeah, I agree with the comments of Commissioner Goldblum and Commissioner Devonshire, and I can find this appropriate.
Okay, great. So I think we have support for the application with the modifications that they continue to study the correct finish in consultation with the staff and that they look at the detailing of the corner post on the corner windows. And I think that many commissioners said that they were okay with the more random location that you would have with windows that pop in and out. So Commissioner Goldblum, would you be willing to maybe just limit that to the corner or, you know, just sort of?
I'll go with, I'll go with, with the majority.
Okay, so if you would make feel comfortable, would you make the motion to just make sure that they continue to work with the staff on the finish in the corner post detail?
Got it. Regarding 1000 Grand Concourse, also known as 161 East 164th Street in the Grand Concourse Historic District, the applications to replace windows. I note, the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Grand Concourse Historic District. I further note that the original windows consisted of a combination multi-light wood, double-hung windows, and multi-light steel casement windows, and that all were replaced by one-over-one double-hung aluminum windows. Prior to designation, I recommend approval finding that the building no longer contains any historic windows on its primary façades. Therefore, the replacement of the existing windows will not eliminate any significant historic fabric. That the proposed replacement windows will recall the historic multi-light windows in terms of configuration, thereby returning the building closer to its historic appearance and the introduction of a more uniform horizontal muntens throughout will reinforce the Art Deco styling of the building. That although the proposed case windows at the smaller punched openings do not match the historic double-hung windows in terms of material configuration or operation, they will unify the overall fenestration in a way that is more typical of buildings of this style and age. That the proposed adjustments to the historic configuration and operation will allow for the uniform installation of through-window air conditioners. That the post-cream colored finish will be consistent with historic finishes typically found in buildings of this age and style and will harmonize with light brick of the façades. That the profiles and details of the windows will be consistent with steel windows typically found in buildings of this age and style, and, and that work will enhance the special architectural and historic character of the building. However, the applicant will work with staff to continue to explore the precise color of the windows in light of their historic precedent and will explore the detail at the corner post of corner wraparound windows.
Thank you. And Commissioner Devonshire, would you second that motion?
Second.
And Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron? Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Holford Smith?
Aye.
With ten in favor and none opposed, the motion passed.
Okay, so that's approved, and please continue to work with the staff on those details. And thank you for a very comprehensive presentation.
Sarah, Sarah, might, might I proffer a thought?
Yes.
I thought that Commissioner Gustafson made a profound comment, not that he often doesn't, but I thought the distinguished, the distinguishing aspect that he threw out so quickly of appropriate versus most appropriate was a very interesting and for me, a profound piece of way to think about all of what we do here. And I just wanted to thank him for the, the thought, and I don't know if it struck anybody else that way, but it's a very interesting way to think about what we do here.
Right.
Almost every Tuesday.
I agree. So thank you, John, and I think it was very helpful for all of us. And, you know, I think that's what we do, is we look at applications and we determine whether or not it's appropriate, and it doesn't have to be the best or the most appropriate. And, and we also approve applications that are not recreations or restorations of a historic condition, right? The restoration is being handled at the staff level. So just the, the fact that things are coming to us means that it isn't a rest, a complete replication, and we often find that to be appropriate. So, John, thank you for that comment, and Fred, thank you for adding that.
Okay, we'll go ahead and move to item number five, LPC 21-06451, An Application for a Certificate of Appropriateness in the Borough of Queens, Block 8036, Lot 50, 375 Beverly Road in the Douglasston Historic District. This is an English cottage-style freestanding house designed by Charles Flores and built in 1929 and altered in 2002. The application is to legalize the construction of a patio without PC permits and to install hardscape features at a side yard terrace.
Applicant has joined the hearing. Just unmute yourself, state your name for the record, and you have control of the slides. So Kevin, if you could just unmute yourself. I think you're unmuted now, if you want to start.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
I have lost the screen, unfortunately.
If you, maybe if you go to the bottom toolbar and hover over either your, the Zoom.
My apologies, I'm not sure what happened here.
Are you in Zoom right now?
No, it has, it has disappeared. I'm sorry.
All right, because you are in the meeting, and we can see and hear you.
Any suggestions, Sarah?
Um, well, it's, the Zoom must be there somewhere, so it's not, the little icon isn't down on your toolbar at the bottom of your screen, desktop screen? The little, it looks like a video camera. So maybe search Zoom in the search box in the bottom of your toolbar?
What I have is the Landmarks Preservation screen. I can, I'm really sorry about this.
That's okay. You just need to find, because you're in the meeting, so you're in the Zoom meeting. You just need to find the app so you can.
Should I go back to the, the link and try it that way, Sarah?
No, 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 I don't think so. I would just, can you search in your, at the bottom of your desktop, there's a white search button, if you type Zoom in there?
Got it.
Okay.
Thank you. So sorry.
That's okay.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kevin Wolf. This project is 375 Beverly Road. It's in the Douglasston Historic District. And it's two items that we're looking at legalization of a terrace built without permits here. It's a corner side. This is Douglas Road. The front of the house is at Beverly. Sorry, this is the view from Beverly Road. And you can see that it's a low brick that matches the existing house that was built several years ago. So those, those are the views of that. The other part of this is building a new terrace here with some amendments to a retaining wall. There's a driveway that you enter from Douglas Road. There's no garage at this house, just this gravelled courtyard for parking. There's an entry this way, and the new part is outlined here. This is what exists. The driveway is just beyond here. There's currently some pavers. This is the west side of the house. And part of this project will include extending this roof out to make a small porch. And this is the area where the roof would be extended out to make a covering. The owners come up from their driveway from this direction, enter here, and they wanted a, a place that was covered from the weather. So this is that porch. This is existing. French doors here. This would pull out four feet, and there would be timbering columns to make that porch. So it's four feet total that it's pulled out. It's open, not enclosed. There's also a built-in barbecue, a gate, an arbor. These are some of the details, and a wall fountain. This is the wall fountain, the barbecue unit, the face of the barbecue unit. This is the wall fountain in section. It's a very simple brick, same brick as the existing house. So this shows you the existing condition. This is just a portable pergola that the owner uses. I'm showing you two slides of proposed. One doesn't show the gate, so that you can see the extension of the porch here. And the other one shows the gate. When the gate is shown, you can't see the porch, which is the reason it's left out. But the proposal is to have the arbor and gate. And that's the project.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions, Commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Chapin, please go ahead.
Yeah, could the staff or the applicant just talk about when this was installed, that we're, you know, the violation that we're fixing, the construction of the patio, and what the perception was at the time about, you know, why they didn't apply to landmarks? If, if that's known, if it is the current owner. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I can answer that. I don't know why they didn't apply for permits. If they had contacted me, they certainly would. So they did this several years ago on their own before I met them.
Okay. Other questions? All right, let's see if we have any public testimony, and then we may have more questions after that. If you're in the hearing and within the meeting and would like to testify, please raise your virtual hand so we can identify you. And I will turn it over to Lisa Kersavage to take us through the testimony.
Hey, thank you. We have one person signed up. Historic District Council, bring in now.
Hi, this is Kathy Brough speaking on behalf of the Historic Districts Council. HGC agrees with the removal of the pergola and does not approve the conspicuous arched gateway proposed, and we recommend that it not be used in the chosen design. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I don't see any other hands raised.
Okay, thank you. And we did receive a letter from Queens Community Board, 11 recommending approval of the application. Kevin, would you like to respond to any of the comments?
I would just say that the gate is there for a couple of reasons. It's there in part for privacy. The hedge that's shown is only a couple of feet high so that the commissioners could see into the space and the rendering. But the intention is that the hedge be seven feet high at maturity. And the gate is a cedar wood gate that will be left natural. So within a year, it will silver out. The rendering shows it in its natural cedar color. And they have a dog as well, in part the gates for that.
Okay. All right, Commissioners, other questions? Okay, well, maybe could we just go to the site plan and, again, and Kevin, if you can just point on the site plan to the location of the work. I think that'll help us to understand
Sure.
where it is relative to the front of the house and your experience.
Okay, how do I, I'm sorry again, how do I go back?
Just click on the screen, and then you should be able to use your arrow keys to move.
For some reason, nothing is happening when I click on the screen.
Yeah, I can bring it to the block plan.
Great.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So the new work is a partial reconstruction of the driveway wall here to allow the stair. The stair currently is hugging tight to the house and goes down to a basement. So here, it's moved over to give a planted area here. And one can now come up straight on to this. The porch that we were talking about, the extension of four feet, is here. There's the built-in barbecue here. The wall fountain is here. And the rest of this is bluestone paving, intended to be, you know, furniture arrangement of outdoor couch, dining table, things like that. The gate and arbor that we're talking about is here, and the hedge would run through here to create this private outdoor room, basically. So the gate is visible from Beverly Road if you're walking along the public way here.
Okay, great. But, and it is setback from the facade that faces Beverly Road.
It, it lines up with the facade. The gate lines up with the facade at Beverly Road. There's a 20-foot setback for the DMA deed restrictions that it complies with.
Okay. I see. Oh, I see. I'm looking at a dimension line that's setback. Okay. All right, if there are no other questions, we'll move to our discussion. Commissioner Jefferson, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
I make a motion to close the hearing.
And Commissioner Gustafson, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, the hearing is closed and we'll begin our discussion. So this proposal is to make some modifications to the backside of the house, which includes some changes that are visible from the streets, including obliquely this extension of the porch, the, and then the patio, and then the, the gate with adjacent to the hedge. So we'll go ahead and start our discussion. Diana is our Queens. One of our Queens representatives, would you like to start this one?
Uh, thank you, Sarah. Could we move back to the picture that depicts really the changes in a proposed?
Do you have a slide number?
I think.
No, it was the rendering that had the gate and the hedge.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yes, it's the rendering, because it shows the, the new, the proposed.
There we go.
There we go. Thank you, thank you. Okay, so I don't have any problem with the porch, the, the fountain. I think that in general, the intent of, you know, installing a patio, which is what we're approving, you know, it's possible that the owner didn't realize that, that, you know, would trigger landmarks for whatever reason, you know, because it's a flat installation, who knows? I can't really speculate too much on that, but, you know, the question, looking at it, would we approve what's presented? In general, yes. The problem I have is that, well, because the hedge is not where it will be, we need to see that gate again. The gate looks very outsized and inappropriate because they were trying to show what it would look like, I guess. But if the hedge is going to come up to the top, it's a very different appearance. I mean, the gate right now, the gate there with the hedge, where it is, does not look appropriate at all. It may, I mean, maybe a more transparent gate, either would. It may, I mean, maybe a more transparent gate, either wood or wrought iron or something. Might be more appropriate and still provide a fair measure of privacy. But I'm not, I'm not comfortable with the gate as presented. In this arrangement.
Is it the sort of the overall shape of it, do you think? Or is it the materials? This is stated the materials will tone down over time.
Yeah, it's a little, that's what I was saying. I think a wooden gate might be appropriate, but would maybe, maybe a little more transparency to it. Is what I was thinking, or else, as I said, a wrought iron. I, I don't have a real problem with necessarily the materials that would be weathered. I think that would, you know, be suitable. Anyway.
So the design, yeah.
Yeah, and I, look, you know, there, it's more than 20 feet back. I understand the need for privacy, but they've got a huge fence, hedge on one side. They'll now have a hedge on this side. And as he's, as the architect said, it'll be creating an outdoor room. And, you know, we don't really govern, you know, things like vegetation and stuff. So, you know, I could, even though it looks much nicer without the gate and with the hedge, it's not going to be that in the future. So I could, I could, you know, go along with some kind of a gate there. I just think this gate is a little too intrusive looking from my perspective. I mean, it's calling attention to itself. It may be partly the rendering. But that's, that's my reaction. Okay.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Goldblum?
Um, thank you. I, I agree with Diana. I think that, I think that the addition that was done without a permit is appropriate. And frankly, in a district like this, I think there should be regulations to allow that to be reviewed at staff level, that kind of thing. I think that the, the weird thing about the gate for me is that it's a, it's this kind of, you know, neo-Renaissance-y kind of affair on a Tudor house. I think it just looks discordant. It's, it's from, it's from a different house. You know, this house has segmental arches and dark stained wood, and this is, you know, light gray with a full arch and a, and a keystone that Vignola would love. I, I just don't, I think it's a little bit, I think it's a little bit out of left field. However, it didn't really bug me enough to make me feel like it was inappropriate simply because it's a kind of a piece of furniture in the, in the yard. And I could, and I could vote to support it even though it is a bit discordant because of that fact, but I, I don't think Diana is wrong, that it's, it is peculiar.
Design, got it. Commissioner Devonshire?
I think that the big problem is the rendering. The, in, in the rendering, the gate appears to be about four feet in front of the hedge. In any case, I, I, I don't have a problem with it. It, it's cedar. Cedar within two years will be gray. They could even, you can accelerate the weathering of cedar with a, with a vinegar solution to, to increase the patina. And I think once that, once that hedge is the same size as the adjacent hedge, I think it'll blend in just fine. I don't, I don't have a problem with it. I'm okay with the, well, I'm not okay with the violation, but I'm okay with what they have put in.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Chen?
Yeah, with no pun intended, I'm sort of on the fence on this one. So this is, Diana has a good point, but I do agree with Michael that I have no problem with it. I think it's the truth in rendering. I think it's more the rendering issue, I hope.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Bland?
I have no problem with it. I think it's a rendering issue. It'll, it will fade into gray within two years, as was said, and don't have a problem with it. And I think everything else that's being suggested here or legalized, we would have approved in the first place. Too bad they didn't come to us.
Thank you. Commissioner Jefferson?
I can approve the, the terrace. I think it looks quite handsome. I think the gate, the location of it, it's kind of odd. If they pushed it back to align with the, with the hedge and use the brown color that they used with the addition in the back, it could be quite handsome. It's going to aid to something quite, quite sedate in the future. I can, I can approve.
Okay. Commissioner Gustafson?
Yeah, I, I have to reiterate the rendering problem. I think if I heard the applicant correctly. I thought they said the, the hedge was flush with the front, with the wall of the house. And the rendering has it set back. I happen to like it set back. It looks like a setback a couple of feet, right? And if the gate actually, if the rendering was correct and the gate was in between the left and the right sides of the hedges, then it was actually that two feet setback. I, I think it's okay and I, it will, it's not my favorite design, but again. I can't say it's inappropriate.
Okay, thanks. Commissioner Shamir Baron?
I think it's appropriate as designed.
And Commissioner Holford Smith?
Yeah, once again, not the most appropriate, but I think it's appropriate. But I do think that the gate needs to be in line with the shrub, shrubbery. And it's, it's hard to tell whether that's a rendering issue or that's intentional.
Okay. Okay, all right. So I think, I know Diana, you had concerns about the design. So Commissioner Devonshire, would you make the motion and just we'll approve it as is, but with the understanding that the gate slash arbor is in line with the hedging, hedges. Michael, are you there?
I'm sorry, I was muted. Deaf mute. In matter of 375 Beverly Road in the Douglas Historic District. An application to legalize the construction of a patio without Landmarks Preservation Commission permits. And install hardscape features at a side yard entrance. I recommend approval. Finding that the construction of the patio at the east terrace did not damage or eliminate any significant architectural or landscape features. The size, location and presence of the patio and perimeter walls and stairs is harmonious with the scale and architectural character of the house. That the proposed small, simply designed porch in front of the recessed entrance at the west elevation featuring dark painted wood will be in keeping with the style details and finishes of the house. That the proposed wood arbor at the west terrace will be typical of garden features found in this historic district. The installation of the proposed outdoor countertop and fountain will be partially screened by plantings and located at a distance from the street and will not call undue attention to itself. That the red brick used for the patio and hardscape features will blend in with the red brick walls of the house and retaining wall. And that the applicant will work with staff to refine the design of the hedge and the gate. And the proposed work then will not detract from the specialist or architectural character of the house or the historic district.
Right. And I think that refinement really is relating to the intent of the, the location intent and how the two relate to each other. All right. And Commissioner Goldblum, would you second that motion?
Second.
Mark, will you call the vote?
Sheriff Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Holford Smith? Commissioner Holford Smith?
Aye.
All right. With 10 in favor and none opposed, the motion passes.
Right, thank you. So that's approved. Thank you. And we'll move to the next items.
Next item is public hearing item number six, LPC 22-01664. Application for a certificate of appropriateness in the road of Manhattan, block 1202, lot 26, 1 West 88th Street in the Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District. This is a modern style school building designed by Edgar Taffel and built in 1967, and the application is to alter the areaway walls.
Applicant has joined the hearing. You do have control of the screen. If you just click to activate that and state your name for the record and you may begin.
Thank you. Good morning commissioners. My name is Mary Dirks and I'm the preservation consultant for the project. With me are the architect, Oren Mills, and Trevor Day School Executive Director of Operations, Lisa Lansey. They're here to answer questions. Um. Okay. All right, so that's the, where it is on the Upper West Side and that's the street view. Here's the building. This is a, a project to add a ramp on the left side of the entrance and to lower the walls in front, the areaway walls, and to add a railing. Trevor Day School was built in 1967 for the Walden School, and it was designed in the modern style by architect Edgar Taffel. Here it is in about a 1967 rendering and in 1987. It's largely intact. But the main entrance has been altered. There were originally two openings in the wall for two entrances. The second entrance is circled there. When the building became linked to 279 Central Park West next door. The entrance steps were removed and the areaway wall was filled in. So that's right here. At the west side, the left, the wall was raised in part. We'll, we'll see more of this later. Taffel referenced the building next door and the wall reflects the base of that building. The building has since been replaced and the entire context has changed. I'd like to say now that Edgar Taffel has used railings in front of other buildings, including St. John's and the Village Episcopal Church. And a wall was not, an areaway wall is not a hallmark of the style. Here's the entrance today. If you look down the block, you'll notice the railings are a major part of this historic streetscape, all of the areaway railings on the Upper West Side. And the school is recessed from the street. The street can handle a ramp. The reason for the project is that the school considers it most important to provide accents, access for the students, the teachers and the parents who can't negotiate steps. In addition, the basement stairs and the entrance and the wall at the east present blind spots in the street. The entrance, basement entrance is dark even with lighting. And the community neighbors have expressed their concerns about this area being kind of dark and, and they feel a little bit dangerous. So in addition to the removal of the steps and the filling in of the wall, the west wall was raised at the top and you can see, you can see the seam right, right here. The wall is not in good shape. It's cracking and it's falling. The basement steps, the red ones there are very rusted and they're affecting the wall as well. This is under the basement wall next to the stairs is in poor shape and needs a lot of repairs with the cracked and spoiled concrete and potentially rusting rebar. It's an area where work is going to have to go on. These are the existing and the proposed plans. So a ramp will be added on the, on the west, existing and proposed there. I'm facing there, I'm facing the wrong way. The bluestone will, the bluestone landing will, will be extended a step and the bluestone, the whole of that will be replaced in kind. The wall on both sides of the entrances will be lowered and railings added. Other work on the project is being handled at staff level, and that includes replacing the bluestone platform in kind. Adding a chairlift at the entrance landing because there are two sets of steps leading to the entrance. Replacing the entrance doors to match existing and replacing the metal basement steps with concrete ones. Here's a blown up elevation showing the lowered wall and railing. Here are the existing and the proposed renderings. Code does require railing. And the pickets have been added because this is a school that has very young children. And the people at Trevor Day say that they will swing on the railings at any opportunity if there are not pickets. The basement stairs that are adjacent also make a, some sort of closure. They are very important. That's the project. Complete. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. And we do have one question. Commissioner Shamir Baron?
I'm wondering if you'd considered a, rather than a rail at the ramp, that is at the street side of the ramp. Replacing or recreating a wall so you'd have us in a sense, a double wall system. Or one offset from the other, so that at least that form was, you know, maintained even while you've pushed it forward towards the street and included a ramp.
I'm going to see if, uh, Oren Mills can answer that question, the architect.
Yes, I sure can. Thank you. Again, my name is Oren Mills. I'm the architect for this project. I did, I did look at putting a wall there, but my intent was to minimize the amount of volume that I'm adding to the ramp and to the steps. Plus, we'd have to put a railing on it. So the railing that I'm showing here, the actual hand rail is on top of the guardrail. So it's basically I've minimized the amount of metal that you see there and I tried for an open feeling. So that there weren't, there wasn't any hidden spots behind a wall on the ramp. I hope that answers your question.
And Lisa Lansey of Trevor Day, did you want to say anything about the choice of the railing?
We were hoping in this process to open up the entrance a little bit, to make it a little bit more inviting and also to avoid any dark spots. Especially going into the winter months like we are right now. There's just blind spots because of these walls, and we were just hoping to open it up just so that you have more visibility as you're walking down the street, both for our students and our families, but for the neighborhood.
Okay, Commissioner Jefferson?
Yes, I had a question about the ramp cheek wall and the, is that just concrete or is that covered with bluestone? In other words, is it part of the new addition that the cheek wall is part of the, the same material as the stairs coming down or is it different?
It's different. I'm sorry, Oren, did you want?
Okay, I was gonna, I'm suggesting that we make it part of the sidewalk, make it look like the concrete on the sidewalk, sort of tie in the two surfaces.
And I wanted to say too, which I didn't, that the wall, the areaway wall is concrete and it's, it's painted. So the, it's not bluestone like the steps. So we've got concrete in the, on the side.
So the concrete comes up, becomes the wall and the stair sticks out as a separate element. I'm
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, and just to sort of clarify this, because there are a lot of parts to this application and some of those are currently being reviewed at staff level, although not they haven't, those, those portions of the applications have not been completed and there hasn't been a final approval for them yet. I just want to ask Corey if he can quickly and succinctly identify the items that are before us and the items that are being reviewed at staff level.
Absolutely. And essentially the ramp itself and the extension of the landing to receive the, the ramp are reviewable at staff level per the rules. Although as mentioned, we are not permitted to that yet. So we're still working through the details in terms of railing design and things of that, of that nature. So what is before you today is simply the removal of the solid raised parapet of the areaway wall. Which, you know, I'm not sure is 20 or 30 feet of it here and replacing that with an open railing. We don't have any staff level rule to accommodate that specific change to sort of an original feature, although it's been modified over time. So it is really the alteration to the areaway wall that is before the commissioners this morning. So it is really the alteration to the areaway wall that is before the Commissioners this morning.
Thank you, Corey. Other questions? Okay, I don't see any other questions, so why don't we move to public testimony? If you're in the meeting and would like to speak on this item, please raise your virtual hand so we can identify you and I'll turn it over to Lisa to take us through the testimony.
Okay, thank you. I'll start with Landmark West and Sean Corsandy.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Sean Corsandy for Landmark West. The Landmark West Certificate of Appropriateness Committee believes our landmarks are for all and increasing accessibility is a meaningful goal. The proposed alterations are responsive to a practical need while also improving on the original, making it more approachable in both the physical and welcoming senses. Further, the interventions unify the various painted metal surfaces from stairs, rails and doors, allowing them to recede to again be secondary to the building architecture itself. Landmark West Certificate of Appropriateness Committee recommends approval of this application, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Historic Districts Council.
Hi, this is Kathy Bril speaking on behalf of the Historic Districts Council. HDC feels the replacement of the solid walls with the barred metal fencing detracts from the building's inherent minimalism. The proposed aesthetic is not true to the character of the original design and the removal of the walls appears unnecessary. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I don't see any other hands raised.
Okay, and Community Board seven, center resolution recommending approval of the application. So I'd like to turn back to the applicants and ask if you'd like to respond to the comments.
Very briefly, we did talk about it, that the wall already has been altered in front. We're proposing another alteration to address a school and neighborhood situation that has arisen safety one and somewhat aesthetic. And we think that while it's not the original, that it is something that the architect has done in the past and we consider appropriate to this building, thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, Commissioners, any final questions? All right, I am sending requests to unmute so we can close the hearing. And Commissioner Holford Smith, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
Certainly.
Thank you, and Commissioner Bland, would you second that motion?
Second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the hearing is closed and we're going to begin our discussion, looking at this rendering, just please note that the ramp and extension of the landing are being reviewed at staff level pursuant to our rules that allow for such changes to be reviewed at staff level. And the item that's really before us today is this removal of a portion of the new wall to install, to lower it and install a railing. And we'll begin that discussion, Commissioner Jefferson, would you like to start this one?
This is, this is, when I saw this last night, I thought of the extension of the stair and I was looking at it in terms of composition with the ramp. So the question is not the ramp anymore, is the wall and the removal of pieces of the wall. And I, looking at it now, rethinking what I thought last night, I don't see why the walls were removed and I don't quite understand why we just couldn't keep them unless I'm missing something. That, what does the railing, why the railing is there in terms of just transparency, see through it? Or if that's the reason, A, or B, I don't see any reason for removing the wall.
Okay, I think what the applicant said is that they had security concerns and wanted to be more welcoming to students and that they believe that because the wall's been altered in the past, this would be in keeping with that. Okay. So, let's move. Commissioner Gustafson?
Yeah, I'm fine with the removal of the, the top of the wall for the transparency purposes. With all of the other changes that are going on in the, in the course of this project, it's really not the place the eye is going to go to anyway, so it's appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Yes, from, from what I can tell, it's just maybe just a quick question for Corey or others. The slide five shows that there's a change in height on the wall to the left. So there's a lower piece and then there's a higher piece and in the existing condition. And the lower piece, the lower height seems to be the height that, and this is again just my read on it, eyeballing it, looks like the height that was originally proposed in the, or originally built or originally proposed in the architect's renderings. And so I just, I would, I would, now that I'm realizing, I would like a confirmation that that's, might be the case or that we have information that that's the case. I do think that the removal of the wall is not appropriate, nor the reduction as substantial as they have of its height and replacement with rails. So, but I do not think that it needs to be at the height of the taller element that's there. It should be at the height of the lower element that exists today, which to me seems not to be as sort of threatening or obscuring or problematic as, as the kind of the slightly taller height. So, so specifically, I would actually, so absolutely approve if we're asked to approve this and think appropriate, the ramp, the additional ramp. Wish there might have been another approach to sort of the street side of the ramp that might have sort of reiterated this wall thing, but not going to feel that that's essential. What I do think though is that the, the, the wall as this kind of first level of, of sort of demarcation forward of the building is very much part of the original design at its lower height and should be included.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Holford Smith?
Um, yes, so this is a little tricky. I think the original walls were certainly a part of the design intent, but I can understand how they become a dangerous situation now. So I can, I can approve the lowering of the walls. I think that the design of the ramp, I guess that's a staff applicable, but I hope that they could keep working with staff. It would be really nice if they could incorporate a low wall and not just that triangle of concrete. Having that hit the bluestone, we're showing what I think is that the first step is concrete and so there's a lot of materials going on there. I hope that they can work that out better with staff.
Okay, great, thank you for that feedback. Commissioner Chapin?
Yeah, I'm a little perplexed by it, I guess in general. First, the question has not been answered yet, which is the, the wall on the left side as presented, which I believe is lowered from, I think it's being lowered back to the original height, lower than because it had been extended at some point in time, is that correct? That's first.
If I could just jump in to kind of clear that part of it up. So to the left of the opening where the landing position would be, was added to, I don't know, by a couple of feet. To the left of that is sort of a roof over the covered descending stairs and that represents the original height as does the wall on the other side of the opening. So the wall was added to, they will remove that, but they are proposing to remove further than that and take it down to the level of the landing and replace it with an open rail. So it is more than just removing the portion which was added to, it goes beyond that and lowers the whole thing, other than that section to the far left, which can't be lowered because it's a roof over a descending stair.
So the, the one on the far left matches what is there now and what was originally there?
Correct.
That was my understanding, I, you know, I did understand the others would be lowered, but I, I thought that was actually the height. And I think that on the right was also at that height in the original design, is that correct?
That's what it looks like.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. All right, so it's, it's a difficult issue because obviously the architect included, intended this wall to be part of his original design. And and then we're left with, well, we do, we're going to have a remnant of it because of the need to have that stair cover on the left, so there will be a remnant of the original design. And then the question is what to do with the rest of the wall that is being proposed to be lowered and, you know, a protective kind of fence put on top of it. My original reaction I think was, well, you know, we would, should not really interfere with the original design, although it's, has been modified to some extent over time. But at the same time, this is a working facility and there are need. So I guess with the understanding that there's a memorial, so to speak, of the original wall height on the left, that I could go along with the proposed change, changes to the right side. And once you're really bringing it down to this extent, I don't really have a problem with the fencing as well, I guess, since there's such a substantial change to the design of the original wall. It's really not the same as what was originally intended. So I think I can approve this as presented.
Okay, all right, thank you. Commissioner Goldblum?
Okay, thank you. It's always hardest to figure out what to do with problem buildings, you know, that just don't fit in and aren't simple. I mean, this is a building that I pass, I don't know, two or three times a week and it's, it's hardly Mr. Taffel's finest hour, I think. One might say without fear of contradiction. But he is an important architect and it is a protected building in the district, so the question is what to do with it. I think that I, I take my guidance from the rendering on page four of 11 that shows what the intent was, which is a symmetrical building hovering above an asymmetrical base. The placement of the canopy, the placement and design of the solid wall were all meant to create an asymmetry at the base that contrasted with, but acted as a base for the symmetrical box above. So with that in mind, I will offer a second or a third or fourth option, which is to leave the wall on the left, but kill it on the right. I think that the design of the landing for the stair and ramp basically exacerbate the asymmetry, exacerbates the wrong word, they accentuate the asymmetry. And I think that it indicates an openness to the east, which again seems consistent with the original design. So I would say that it's okay to remove the wall to the east, but not the one to the west. And pursuant to what Erardo had kind of hinted at earlier, I would suggest that the, the ramp be bluestone and its cheek wall be bluestone along with the stairs, just so that it kind of quiets down. And I think Anne had also said there was a lot of materials going on. But I, that's what I would suggest and they might also explore integrating a planter into that, into that wall, similar to what Mr. Taffel had shown in his proposal.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Devonshire? Oh, I think we've, I think he had to step away. Commissioner Chen?
This one, I, I have, you know, I agree with the testimony from Landmark West especially in terms of anytime we can enhance the accessibility and, and also the transparency as Chair just said, the, about, you know, in terms of both visibility, security as well as, but I do agree with Anne's comment about some of the details could be refined, as Michael just mentioned. Somehow, there's, there's something awkward about the current proposal as a stand. I can't put my finger on it, but, you know, and so I do not know what to suggest. You know, the, you know, this is a, is there and the ramp and and so this is the part that's hard for me to even make a suggestion. I know Anne makes a suggestion and Michael makes some suggestions, so let's see where it goes from here.
Okay, but I think those were suggestions to guide the staff as they review the ramp at staff level. So, you know, it's really, Michael's suggestion was sort of a compromise to the application of lowering the wall, which was to keep it on the west side, but allow the lowering of it on the east side. I think Anne was comfortable with the lowering of the wall, given kind of the sort of modern issues of safety.
To be clear, I'm comfortable with lowering the wall as well, I'm comfortable as is.
Okay. Commissioner Bland?
I think I have a simple, a simpler position that, given the goal of accessibility and the fact that this wall has already been changed in the past, I can pretty much go along with what's being proposed, which is not to say I would resist some of the changes that have been suggested that the applicant maybe work with staff to achieve.
Okay, all right, and I think for me in this case, and I agree, this is a challenging item when we're looking at the original design intent and making changes to it. Having said that, we do that lots of times, right, to help buildings meet modern needs and new uses. And so the question is, is the wall such a critical part of the design that it shouldn't be changed? And I think I'm on the side of the others that feel that, you know, it has been altered over time and that one could lower the wall without really affecting the entire design. So I think that puts six of us in support of lowering the wall, if I did my count right. And I think that we would also ask that the staff follow the suggestions made by Commissioners today on the ramp, considering both the materials and the sort of configuration of the wall at the base of it to help it relate better to the composition. But I think that we do have six in support of lowering the wall. So Commissioner Gustafson, would you make that motion and we'll then do the vote and see if I counted right?
Okay, I'm going to leave it to you to correct the, after I get through this. In, in the matter of LPC 2201664, 1 West 88th Street, Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District, applications to alter areaway walls. I note that the building's style, scale, materials and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural historic character of the Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District. I recommend approval, noting that the existing concrete area wall has been altered over time by combining openings and raising a segment of the wall. Therefore, the proposed work will be in keeping with this history of change at the base of the building. That removing the top of the concrete area wall and installing a railing in its place could increase openness and visibility at the base of this school building and will have a softer presence in this residential streetscape. That the materials of the proposed modification consisting of precast concrete coping stones and tan painted metal railings are simple in design and will be harmonious with the building and the streetscape and that the work will not diminish the special architectural and historic character of the Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District. Do you want to add any limitations to that?
Nope.
Okay.
Okay, and Commissioner Chen, would you second that motion? Commissioner Chen?
Second it.
Okay, thanks. And Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Baron, Shamir Baron?
Nay.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye, can you hear me?
Yes.
Commissioner Devonshire?
He's away, he hasn't been here for this. He's away. He hasn't been here for this.
Okay. Commissioner Goldblum.
No.
Commissioner Gustafson.
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson.
Nay.
Commissioner Holford Smith.
Aye.
With six in favor and three opposed, the motion passes.
Okay, so that's approved. Um, and we will ask you to continue to work with the staff on those portions of the application that are being reviewed at staff level to take into consideration the suggestions we heard from commissioners today on the material and the configuration of the ramp wall.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
It will now move to public hearing item number seven, LPC twenty-one dash zero one seven one five. Application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Manhattan, Block twelve oh three, Lot twenty thirty-three West eighty-ninth Street in the Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District. This is a Renaissance revival style rowhouse designed by Gilbert A. Schellinger and built in eighteen ninety-four to ninety-five. And the application is to modify the areaway, construct a stoop, modify window openings, replace windows, and construct rooftop and rear yard additions.
Um, the applicant has joined the hearing. If you could just unmute yourself. Um, click on the screen to advance the slides and uh state your name for the record. You may begin. Okay, you just need to unmute.
Apologies, yes, sorry about that. Uh, good afternoon. My name is Joji Tuso. I'm the architect for this project at thirty-two Western Ninth Street. The project is located about mid-block between Central Park West and Columbus Avenue. We are proposing to uh restore the original stoop entry at the primary facade and reconfigure the rear facade. This is a nineteen forty-six photo showing the building. Um, this is after the original stoop had been removed. Uh, this is a wider context shot, thirty-three Western Ninth in the middle. Uh, you can see thirty-one has the original stoop and thirty-five has the original stoop still. Uh, this is showing the areaway and stoop at thirty-five on the left. And this is showing the existing entry at thirty-three Western Ninth on the right. Thirty-two Western Ninth on the left here and thirty-one Western Ninth is on the right here. These are some other areas and entryways uh along the same side of the street, along the block. Uh, many of the original suits have been removed, some do remain. Uh, there's a lot of variation, uh, but most of them have basement level entries. Uh, and there's a pretty good mix of materials in these entryways. So this shows the existing uh primary facade on the left and the proposed primary facade on the right. Uh, we are also replacing the windows, but I believe that's being reviewed and approved at staff level. Uh, we will be restoring the entry doors and transom again to uh match the entryways uh at thirty-one and thirty-five in the original entryway. Uh, we will be using the details at thirty-one, thirty-five uh to replicate on this stoop. Um, this is the existing conditions on the top two drawings proposed in the bottom. Uh, we are essentially planning to uh match the stoops in every way. Uh, the only thing that we are not able to match is the front alignment. Uh, the Department of Transportation revocable consent units is not allowing us to um have anything encroached on the five-foot clearance to the existing tree pit. It's a mature tree. Parks will not let us remove it, and we cannot get the tree pit this small if we tried to again. So we are having to push the stoop back approximately nine inches from the adjacent stoops. We will align um the back of the landing here and all other details would be the same as the adjacent stoops. This shows some of the details at one of the adjacent stoops that we're going to use to model uh for the restored stoop. Uh, moving into the back uh secondary facade, thirty-two Western Ninth is here. Um, there's an existing four-story partial extension. We are planning to remove that and create one with the extension across the facade similar to thirty-one Western Ninth, which did this approximately three years ago. Um, that's the picture on the left here. Thirty-five is on the right here. It has kind of the mirror image uh with the extension off the back. Uh, these are some wider context shots, thirty-three Western Ninth is here, thirty-five is on the right. You can see there are some similar extensions further down the block. Uh, this is looking out from the building across to the other side of the rear court. Again, some existing conditions in thirty-three Western Third Yard. You can see that there's a four-story extension with another floor above. Uh, this is the kind of a primary bulk um portion here. Uh, existing hardscaping and planters in the backyard, which will be removed. This shows the existing sections to the building and rough existing massing. Uh, and this shows the proposed uh section. All the floors are pretty much going to stay where they are now. Uh, most of the structural frame is intact. We're going to keep it. Uh, we are, as I said, kind of bring one width extension across the full back. And there's going to be a new stair and elevator bulkhead at roof level. These diagrams of the block kind of show some of the other extensions in the rear court. Um, as I said, there are a lot on this side that have three-story extension. There's some two stories, there's some full builds. There's a lot of variation in this rear yard or in this record. Um, this kind of shows the massing of thirty-three here in yellow adjacent to thirty-one. So we're going to be matching the the configurations very closely. Our roof scape is a little different. Um, they had an offset. Um, we're just proposing to keep the roof level pretty much where it's at and maintaining that uh roof line across the back. So this shows the existing rear facade on the left and proposed rear facade on the right. Um, so we are proposing to have some larger openings at the basement level and the first floor parlor level. And then we would kind of maintain the more punched openings on the upper three floors uh at this setback. Uh, we would have two punched opening windows with some access doors to that small terrace. Uh, this massing um shows a bit more detail of everything from the roof down to the rear yard. We'll see that there's a stair bulkhead and the elevator bulkhead. This was all mocked up. And it is not visible from the street. Uh, this shows the existing, um, sorry, this shows proposed uh roof plan. It'll be a terrace towards the rear yard. This is the stair and elevator bulkheads in the middle. Uh, and there's some mechanical space at the front. It's open. The screen that would be on this side of mechanical spaces, even with the top of the eve at the primary facade, and none of this equipment would be visible. This shows the mock-up. In general, it's very similar configuration to thirty-one Western Ninth, and we are actually about two and a half feet lower. Uh, it was not visible from the street. This shows some of the materials that we use in the project, uh, bluestone in the front areaway, some minor uh stucco repairs at the front. Um, and we'll be using a kind of uh buff uh textured brick at the rear facade. And these are some reference plans uh for the uh building and renovation. And this shows the uh roof level where the stair comes up, there's an elevator landing and and bulkhead, some mechanical spaces, terrace outside, and mechanically towards the front. And those are the top of the bulkheads, where we'll have a small portion of green roof as required by code. And that is the project.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioners, do we have any questions? Okay, I don't see any questions now. Why don't we take public testimony and we may have questions after that? So if you're in the meeting and would like to testify on this item, please raise your virtual hand so we can identify you. And as always, we'll start with anyone who signed up in advance. And I will turn it over to Lisa to take us through the testimony.
Hey, thank you. Um, a couple of people signed up. I'll start with Sean Corsandy, Landmark West.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Sean Corsandy for Landmark West. The Landmark West Certificate of Appropriateness Committee was anxious at the litany of proposed changes to this landmark, but happily surprised at the applicant's death handling of each. The long-lost stoop will return with necessary accommodations for the tree pit and otherwise restore the segment of the row. On the rear facade, while we often advocate for retaining the dog leg, we found that as with the front, adapting to a modern context, this full width addition again pairs the row house with its adjacent altered neighbor. Given that there are almost no defining features to be lost, coupled with the applicant's use of masonry and punched windows in the cohesive tripartite proposal, our committee felt this to be an appropriate design if the uppermost rear cornice is to survive. Lastly, the roof addition is comparatively modest and non-visible from the street. Landmark West Certificate of Appropriateness Committee recommends approval of this application with the retention of the rear cornice. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. And next who's signed up is Historic District Council.
Hi, this is Kathy Brill, uh, speaking on behalf of the Historic Districts Council. HGC finds the stoop addition and the rooftop rooftop addition acceptable. The design of the rear addition is also well done. However, the corbling on the cornice of the real rear facade should not be eliminated. As a result of keeping that design feature, the handrail on the roof should be pulled back a bit. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And we also have Michelle Parker.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Michelle Parker. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Michelle Parker from Community Board Seven. Our community board approved this application by a vote of twenty-four in favor, zero against, zero abstentions, and zero abstentions for cause. We especially appreciated this thorough, sensitive applications use of common brick and the um I guess, the sensitivity to the rear yard and the others near it. We are asking that you approve this application. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And with that, I don't see any other hands raised.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, um, I think supportive testimony, but there were a couple of comments about the rear corner. So I'd like to turn back to the applicant and ask if you'd like to respond to that.
Uh, yes, uh, we will incorporate uh the same details uh that are on both sides uh restoring that corbel just under the top. Just to clarify, the hand railing actually sits above and on top of the uh precast cap so that what will have to be adjusted to reintroduce that detail.
Okay, thank you. All right, Commissioners, any final questions? All right, I think we can move to our discussion. So Commissioner Chapin, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So much.
Thank you. And Commissioner Gustafson, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the hearing is closed and we'll begin our discussion. And there are three components to this application. There is the restoration of a missing stoop that will um replicate the details of the historic stoop, but will be set slightly back to allow for the retention of a mature tree, sidewalk tree, a um non-visible rooftop addition that accommodates a stair and elevator bulkhead, and then a rear addition that um matches the neighbor in terms of its height. And we've heard from the applicant that they will replicate the cornice at the top of the original rear facade. So Commissioner Shamir Baron, would you like to start this one?
Sure. I think that um the restoration of the stoop, even while set back a bit uh to accommodate the tree, is um is very appropriate. And and I think will be a terrific addition here, um, resolution here. Uh, the rooftop addition is not visible and I think is um relatively modest. The um rear facade is again, one the brick cleaning and replacement makes sense and so to the the windows that we've approved in in many previous rear situations uh are appropriate. And I do think that they should make every effort to retain the uh corbelled um cornice condition. Um, but that otherwise it's very appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Holford Smith.
Yes, I agree. Um, another stoop. It's exciting to have two stoops in one hearing. Um, I think even with the change for the tree, it's appropriate. Be great reintroduction reintroduction to the streetscape. Um, I think the rooftop addition is is modest and not visible from the street. And I think the rear is in keeping with what we typically approve, uh, as long as they maintain the corbel detail at the corners of the rear.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Chapin.
Uh, yeah, I I agree with uh both of my pre two previous colleagues on um all points.
Okay, Commissioner Goldblum.
Um, I almost agree. I I think that the stoop is fine. I think that the rooftop addition is fine. I think the rear yard addition is fine. Um, in my recollection, we generally tend to uh, propose retaining the top floor. Um, not only at because of a detailed cornice, but also as a material uh remnant of the uh original building. So I would suggest that they actually keep the actual brick of the uh top floor and the openings. And if they want to make one into a door, that's fine. Uh, and I would also suggest they look with staff at the brick color. The buff is kind of a fronty color brick. Um, and uh, if if that is typical of this backyard, that there are uh similarly colored uh rear yard additions, I'd say okay. But generally speaking, I think that um uh, a more kind of common brick is appropriate to rear yards.
Okay, and if um, just like because of the amount of wall that would remain after a three-story addition, if that needs to be reconstructed, would you be comfortable that if it's reconstructed in the same or matching brick with the fenestration?
Yeah, I mean.
Corbelled cornice to be matched?
The the answer is yes, I I would, although in in the past we have that the value of the top floor was the retention of historic materials. So I would try to prejudice that.
Right, okay. Um, Commissioner Chen.
Uh, I I I agree with Anne and I agree with Abby. Uh, I think it's modest. I I'm glad to see the the reintroduction twice in one hearing. Uh, but uh, other than that, I think it's appropriate. The uh addition is modest.
Okay, Commissioner Bland.
Uh, I'm in agreement and don't need to repeat much of what's already been said, but I do want to say that I think the rear um elevation is abnormally handsome. And uh, if it means um elimination of that brick up there, uh, as long as the corbling can, the cornice can remain, I'm in favor of um uh of eliminating that break. Uh, I don't see any real purpose in recalling.
Okay, Commissioner Jefferson.
Um, a very good neighbor design building. It takes into account the neighbors beautifully appropriate.
Okay, and Commissioner Gustafson.
Yep, I agree.
Okay, so um, it looks like we have a majority who would support it as proposed um with the condition that the corbelled cornice be replicated at the top floor. So that does mean in this case um allowing for the fenestration at the top floor to change. And I think, you know, we, as Commissioner Goldblum said, we usually do like that fenestration to remain the same. So I think um if there is you know, maybe some variety in the row that could support the new fenestration change. So Corey, I don't know if you can jump in and maybe speak to that. Or if we have an elevation or photograph that shows the rest of the row.
If there are a few photos, um, what jumps out at me is that on this facade in the neighbors, they're either stucked or perhaps even have tar on them. So the idea of salvaging the brick may itself be a challenge. But I I it's hard to say, there's a lot of trees back here, just how much variety there is at the top floor.
Okay, all right. So I think, um, but I I guess I'm just trying to think of a finding to put in here that the um top floor fenestration pattern is, you know, minimally perceptible from within the block and within other rear facades that have been altered in and within other rear facades that have been altered in their surface materials. So the fenestration, I think, is found to be appropriate, um, among those commissioners who support it. So Commissioner Shamir Baron, would you be able to make a motion? And I, I can add a finding similar to that at the end.
Yes.
Okay.
In the matter of LPC 21-01715-33, West 89th Street, Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District, a Renaissance revival style rowhouse designed by Gilbert A. Schellinger and built in 1894 to 95. The application is to modify the areaway, construct a stoop, modify window openings, replace windows and construct rooftop and rear yard additions. I note that the building's style, scale, materials and details are among the features that contribute to the architectural and historic character of the Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District. And I also note that the building's road historically featured box stoops, two of which remain. And that the row houses on the block feature private entrances, including box and straight stoops and alternate instrument entrances. I recommend approval with some modifications that the proposed alterations will not damage or eliminate any significant architectural features of the building or site, that a box stoop matching the historic stoop in footprint could not be constructed without removing a mature tree. And that only the lower portion of the proposed box stoop will be modestly set back in plane to accommodate the tree pit and will not draw undue attention to itself in this very discreet scape. The placement proportion finishes and details of the stoop and areaways, areaway wall will be compatible with the design of this house and in keeping with such aspects of other stoops and areaway walls found throughout the streetscape, that the presence of the modified stoop will facilitate the restoration of facade details removed from the building prior to the designation of the historic district and will return the building and the row closer to its original appearance. That the proposed rooftop and rear yard additions will not be visible from public thoroughfare, that the rear yard addition will not extend to the rear lot line or substantially eliminate the presence of a rear yard, that the rear yard addition will not rise to the full height of the building or exceed the height of rear additions at new building buildings, that the proposed stucco clad rooftop addition will be set back from the rear facade, helping to maintain a sense of the building's original massing, that the cumulative effect of the rooftop and rear yard addition will not overwhelm the building or the row, and that the proposed work will not detract from the building or historic district. However, um, the shifting.
Now, the cornice.
Yeah, the elimination of the corbelled brickwork at the top floor of the rear facade will disrupt the unified fenestration, no, will, it, it, it should be, okay. The, there should not be an elimination of the corbelled brickwork at the top floor. Um, and, um, that corbelled brickwork could be, um, retained or restored or replaced, uh, in order for it to relate to the historic fabric of the building. However, and, and do you want to add about?
And then, and I'll just add that it, um, that the, uh, proposed fenestration at the top floor will retain a tripartite configuration and will be minimally perceptible due to the height of the addition and the, um, and it is within a block of varied, uh, of rowhouses with a variety of fenestration patterns, varied fenestration patterns, um, in this, in its context. And so we will approve it with, we're making a motion to approve it with the modification that a corbelled cornice be recreated at the top floor. Okay.
Need a second.
I know. Commissioner Holford Smith, would you second that motion?
I second it.
Thank you. And Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire's been having technical trouble. So Commissioner Goldblum?
No.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Holford Smith?
Aye.
With eight in favor and one opposed, the motion passes.
That's approved with the modification. Please continue to work with the staff on those details. Um, so that concludes our morning session. We're going to break for lunch now. We'll return at 1:15. So we'll ask, um, all members of the public to exit the meeting at this time and rejoin at 1:15 when we, uh, resume. And, uh, Commissioners, you just need to turn off your audio and video. Thank you.